Is the man at the hour?
One of us is wearing only a diaper.
Bar, take either one of you stand up.
You lie. Tell your dad to go put some pants on.
So Jason, you got the Depends on?
I'm a pamper's man myself.
Oh, okay. Okay, Tim Moore, are you out there? Commissioner Moore calling?
I'm right here.
Oh, awesome.
On my cell phone. I still haven't figured out the video.
Oh, okay. You need your IT professional.
I do need one of those.
Yeah. How about your wife?
My wife does the work.
Oh, okay.
Oliver, hook me up for next meeting, maybe.
Oh, no problem. Good evening. We'll get started at 6:30. Call to order meeting number 1783, the Planning and Zoning Commission, at 6:31 officially. We have a quorum. I see we have five regular members and two alternates. And is Marty, are you on the line? I don't see you on video. All right, well, perhaps she'll be joining us later. Okay, so we have a quorum. There was no legal notice. I want to make an announcement before we start the meeting. On one of the preliminary agendas, as well as at last month's, the last meeting, we had indicated that Broadbrook Meadows re-subdivision, which is a 15-lot residential subdivision, the corner of Depot Street and East Street, was going to be heard tonight. But at the applicant's request, we're postponing this meeting. We're just postponing that discussion until the July 14th meeting. So if any of you in the audience that are expecting to hear any discussion on Broadbrook Meadows re-subdivision, that's not occurring tonight. It's not on the agenda. Just wanted to make that announcement. But we did talk about it at a last meeting. Okay, added agenda items. There was one application to be received for West River Farms, 329, 332, 339, and 341 Scannick Road, request for a five-year extension of an existing special use permit in time to complete subdivision requirements. And we'll be talking about that later on in the agenda. We're accepting it tonight. Next up, this is the public participation portion of our meeting. Are there any comments from the audience?
Excuse me, Joe?
Yes?
There should have been a second application to be received.
And where would that be? Is that?
It was something you were supposed to have been sent today.
It's, Joe, it's 206 South Main Street. I was.
Is that the one, Ruben? I asked you a question on email today. I never heard from you.
I wasn't at the office today. I'm here homesick.
Okay.
206 South Main Street. I believe, Tim, I saw Tim Kuhn around.
Yeah, that's a site plan modification by ACI Auto Group. Just done for receipt tonight.
Does anyone else have that information in front of them? Or just me?
No.
Yeah, I've got it, Joe.
Can, hey, Dick, can you just read that into the record? Because I don't have it in front of me. I probably have it buried in an email, and I don't have access to that right now.
Okay. I'm not seeing the actual application yet, though. Okay. The new application to be received tonight is the application from ACI Auto Group 206 South Main Street with a request for a modification of approved site plan for 9,360 square foot building for used car sales and auto repair. Property owned by 206 South Main Street LLC, map 22, block 5, lot 81.
Thank you very much. So that was an added agenda item, and we're just accepting the application tonight. Next up, public participation. We'll try this again. Is there any comments in the audience for something that's not already on tonight's agenda?
Joe, this is Jay.
Yes.
So I had mentioned to the commission at the last meeting that I was working on creating a template for a developer's agreement. I just wanted you folks to know that that's been passed around at the staff level and that it's been shared with the town attorney for review. And that'll be something to present to this commission at your next regular meeting. If that's something you guys would entertain for your agenda.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jason.
Jason, I have a question. Well, maybe I'll ask you later. Nevermind. Go ahead, Joe. I'm sorry.
Are there any other comments in the audience on something that's not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving on. Next up is approval of minutes for June 9th, 2020. Any commission member have any comments? Corrections, additions on the meeting minutes as written?
I read them, and they're okay as far as I could see. Correct.
Not hearing any comments, so I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of seven, meeting minutes of meeting number 1782 as we've written.
A motion was made by Commissioner Sullivan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? Here and none. I call for a vote to signify by raising your hand as I.
I.
Five. We have a quorum approved. Thank you. Next up, under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance. There is an item for Steve Mosher, Sunset Valley Farms LLC at 55 and 57 Crisick Road, request to release the bonds and as bid submitted. Is there any? Is there any discussion on this one?
Joe, that's right up the road from me, just a couple hundred feet, a couple hundred yards, and it's all planted in corn. It's coming up, and it's landscaped, and it looks great. This is Tim Kuhn here. I do believe that I spoke with Lynn Norton earlier today that he did issue a memo dated June 16th. I don't know if you have that in front of you. Just want to make sure.
That was my next question.
Peg, do you recall that being part of our package?
I thought it was, Joe, but your package got split up because we had problems.
Yeah.
So I apologize. I thought it was in it. Put it this way, I thought it was in the ones that I sent out that didn't go out.
Ruben, do you recall this one from a staff perspective? Do you recall seeing that indicate some correspondence from Lenny?
I personally don't, but if he, if Tim provides a date, I can, I certainly believe that Lynn provided a memo. One thing at the office level is that our ability to transmit electronic files, it's somewhat limited. So it might be one of these things where, you know, we put in a couple of 20M, too heavy of a file, let's put it that way. So that might have been. But Tim Kuhn affirmed that there's a memo in place. I believe it.
Yeah, yeah. He did say that, I believe, it was either issued or sent on June 16th.
Joe, I, Joe Sauerhofer, I see that you're on the line. Do you recall or have any knowledge of something coming from, from your colleague?
Yes, Lynn did, Lynn did have a memo. He made comments that he sent in. I believe he was all set. He did actually did a site visit, I believe, too.
That was what he indicated to me as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Give me a few minutes. I might be able to find it.
Well, nonetheless, does any members of the commission have any comments or concerns while Joe is trying to dig through his records? And one thing we do not have is a motion for approval to release the bond. And I'm guessing from the information that I have, it looks like I have a copy of a bond that was issued to the town of East Windsor back in February 2016 in the amount of $5,100. And I was assuming that's the amount that we're going to be releasing.
That will be correct, Joe.
Tim, is that, is that accurate? That that was the amount?
I do not know the amount.
Okay. Okay.
That's what I'm seeing is 5,100.
Yeah. Well, it's very clear from the memorandum from the, from the treasurer's office to the plan development office at that time, that's what the, the bond, the check was the amount for and what the purpose of it was. Well, does any commission member have any concern about releasing the bond based on, we're trying to find that, that recommendation from Lenny. We heard verbal that it exists. I personally do not. I think this is very low risk.
I agree. I don't have any concern. As I said, I went by it, and it really looks good. It's been seeded with corn, and the corn's coming up, and it looks great.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see anything that indicates there was any other unmet conditions other than the erosion control.
Well, having the, I don't hear any evidence to the contrary that we shouldn't be receptive to this request. So with that, someone want to offer a motion of approval to release the, to release the bond in the amount of $5,100?
Okay, I'll make, I'll take a crack at it. I make a motion that we release the erosion control bond being held in the name of Steve Mosher, Sunset Valley Farms LLC, in the amount of $5,100 for completion of the terms and conditions of the project.
Very good. There's a motion on the table. My bike. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion for release of the bond in the amount of $5,100? Here and none. I call for a vote. All who's in favor, please raise their hands, signifying I. And Tim, is I, you, I can't, you can't raise your hand, but are you an I as well?
I'm an I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we have a, we have a majority. We have five. It's approved. Thank you. Next up, under all business, Labrec AutoCraft LLC, a site plan review for construction of new commercial building for auto repair at 63 Newbury Road. Deadline for decision, July 2nd, 2020.
Good evening. This is Eric Peterson, engineer for the applicant. I don't have any new information to provide. I think at the last meeting, the commission was just looking for a motion, a draft motion to make their decision. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss that with them. But at this point, I really don't have any new information. I did, Ruben did kindly enough provide me with a copy of the motion, and we have no objections to the motion that you, I hope you have in front of you.
Yes.
I really don't have anything to add. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Does Evan, excuse me, does anyone have any questions for Eric?
I do not. I think they were all answered at the last meeting.
Okay, if there are none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the application of Labrec AutoCraft LLC requesting site plan review approval to develop a new 9,600 square foot commercial building for automotive repair services to be located at 63 Newbury Road, East Windsor.
Dick, can you make reference to the conditions?
Oh.
On the reference plans and conditions, finally?
Yes. As conditions 1 through 6 on page 2, and condition 7 through 17 on page 3.
And that's on us on a memorandum to the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission from Ruben Flores, AICP, dated June 10th, 2020.
Correct. So that, that rounds out the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here and none. I'll call for a vote. All who's in favor signify by raising their hands. And Tim, how do you vote?
I.
And I? Oh, thank you. So that's a, so that's five. It's approved. Thank you, Eric, for being patient with us.
Oh, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too. Next up, under new business applicant, the Silverman Group, 12 South Main Street, site plan modification for 6, 62,000 square foot increase to a warehouse distribution facility for two, 123,120 square foot buildings, properties located at 12 South Main Street. It's in the B1 and M1 zoning districts. Is there someone here? Is, Tim, is this one you as well?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Laura's yours.
All right. I am here tonight representing the Silverman Group. In addition, I see that Dan Lass is on the phone to answer any questions if they come up that I can't answer. I do have plans, which I could share my screen if necessary, I guess. But if you all have the plans in front of you, then you'll just go with that for now, and.
We do have full-size plans, and are they anything different than what we were given hard copies of?
No.
No, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. All right. Well, the site, as you know, is 22.2 acres at 12 South Main Street. It actually includes four parcels, which extend from South Main Street up to Wagner Lane and out to South Water Street. It's owned M1 and B1, currently improved with four tobacco barns and access by paved drive off of South Main Street. And it's in agriculture. And you may recall in February of 2019, you approved an application of Sardili Produce for a 2,000, or I'm sorry, 200 and 2,000 produce warehouse and manufacturing facility, as well as a 7,500 square foot maintenance building, which included four fuel dispensers for their fleet trucks. This application had 25 loading docks, 44 tractor trailer spaces, 28 box truck spaces, and 372 automobile parking spaces. Those site plans are being modified because Sardili is no longer coming there, and the Silverman Group wishes to to utilize this site for a warehouse and distribution facility. Their plans include two buildings totaling 246,240 square feet, which is an increase of a little over 36,000 square feet in building area. It will have AV loading docks located between the two buildings, as you can see on the site plans. It will have 33 additional tractor trailer spaces, 18 box truck spaces, and 302 employee and visitor automobile spaces, which is a reduction from the 372, which we had for Sardili. Will be eliminating the maintenance building, eliminating the fuel islands. There'll be no maintenance or fueling on the site. The changes do result in an increase in impervious coverage of about 62,000 square feet. That's where the number came from on the, on the notice and the agenda. It's actually an increase in impervious coverage, that number is, which is still below the allowable maximum for the zone. The onsite drainage system has been adjusted to accommodate this additional impervious area as well as the new layout, and we're still providing infiltration as well as the required stormwater treatment prior to discharge. As you can see, looking at the site, we're maintaining the same traffic circulation that we had for Sardili, which includes the entrance only off of South Main Street. And then we're going to split the trucks from the employees, send the trucks to the south, the employees and visitors to the north. And then they'll have separate exit-only driveways out to South Water Street. And again, the truck exit only will continue to be restricted to left turn only out onto South Water Street. We will be maintaining the 50-foot buffers and the landscape berms between the sites and the residential properties to the west and north. There's an extensive landscape plan in your package showing these landscape berms, the parking lot landscaping. We have added some additional evergreen trees on the east side of the property to screen some of the truck parking from, from the South Main Street side, even though we're setback quite a ways from the road. But you can see that on the landscape plan as well. The site lighting, again, will be a combination of building-mounted lights and pole-mounted fixtures. We're maintaining the maximum 25-foot pole heights that we had before. And again, a photometric plan was provided with your package demonstrating that there's no significant light spill over any of the adjacent property lines. Gubair's Traffic Associates has prepared an updated traffic evaluation, which I believe you have as well. The study indicates that the modified proposal generates less traffic than the previously approved Sardili proposal. He emphasized in his report that we will be maintaining the previously approved traffic patterns and circulation. And we are also still proposing all the same improvements at the intersection of South Water Street and South Main Street. Based on this, his report concludes that the project will not adversely impact the traffic operations on the surrounding roadway networks. The proposed improvements at the intersection, as I mentioned, are not changing from what was previously approved. They include widening of South Water Street to provide an additional right turn and through lane, as well as some additional widening, widening on South Main Street to accommodate the truck turns. The Sardili site plan actually received, or was reviewed by the Office of Traffic Administration, Administration, I'm sorry, OSTA, that you probably better know it as. And as part of that permitting process for large quantity traffic generators, it went through OSTA and the DOT, and all the improvements that we are showing are the ones that we worked out with them. We actually did receive OSTA approval last summer. And when this is approved, if you choose to approve it, this, too, will have to go back to OSTA just for an update, an administrative decision in that regard. The plans have been reviewed by Lynn Norton, the town engineer. All of his comments have been adequately addressed. I did just receive some comments from the fire marshal today, and he has requested, really, there's two major requests. One is he'd like, both of them relate to hydrants. There is an existing hydrant on Wagner Lane to the north of the property, which he has recommended that we provide access to, which we can accommodate by putting through a gated gravel access drive at the north end of the property, at the end of the burn near the barn. So we can certainly accommodate his request there. And the other one was to put another hydrant at somewhere on the south end of the property, which, again, these are things that we, we can accommodate as conditions of approval. I believe that's it. That's kind of a summary of what the modifications are, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And if I can't, hopefully Dan is able to.
Okay, I'm going to query fellow commissioners. I'll go as I see him here. Frank? If you're, if you want to speak, you're on mute. Do you have any questions for Tim?
Uh, no, not really. It seems to me it's just basically what it was the last time that we looked over. And the addition of the fire hydrant seems, seems adequate for me, so I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Dick, you have any comments, questions you want to ask?
Yeah, I have two here. One about the application itself. It said, it states that there was an increase of 62,000 square feet. And then in parentheses, it has 15.2 acres of new impervious surface. I'm reading that as a misprint, or am I missing something?
Yeah, that is a misprint. The 62,000 square feet is the increase. The 15.2 acres might be the total impervious coverage. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, and the second one is what is the prime time for truck movement there?
That, I think I might defer to Dan. Dan, can you answer that question with regard to the trucking and when trucks are anticipated to come and go from the site?
Sure, Tim. Dan Lacy here, Vice President of Development and Construction at the Silverman Group, based in Bassam Ridge, New Jersey. Typically, what we see with truck traffic is that, you know, the truckers, obviously, are controlling their own destination. Most of them go off-peak and do operate 24/7. So there is, there is a trend that off-hours, mid-afternoon, early morning are typically when truckers go, go in and out to avoid peak traffic, you know, with people going to work 9 to 5. Although that has, has changed right now, typically, we see that those counts spread out versus car traffic, which is obviously tied to a shift and/or employment hours.
Okay, and I'm taking it that this must be a 24-hour-a-day operation?
Yes. Right now, right now, it's a spec building that we're going to put up. We're committed on funding and doing the build. We don't have a tenant in hand. But I'd have to assume that some of the users in the market are three-shift operations.
Okay, that's all I have at the present time.
Mike, you're up.
Okay, I'm going off of memory from some of the intents of the previous tenant or applicant. I see we eliminated the barn in the front, which they were going to be using as a training or conference area. They also were going to have onsite food available to prevent the need for employees to leave for lunch. Which, again, kind of factored into their traffic study. So I don't, do you intend to do the same, or you will have people leaving the site for lunch breaks?
There's no plans for any type of cafeteria at this location. I think one of the reasons that Sardili did that was because they were a food distribution center, and there was a lot of concern about cross-contamination when people leave and then come back to work. But.
Right. They had clean rooms that they had to meet.
Exactly.
Yeah. So that, but that was how they factored into their traffic study, that there wasn't going to be a large amount of employee traffic leaving the property during shift hours. May skew the traffic numbers a little bit.
We took that into account in the traffic update.
Okay. They, if I remember correctly, they previously had also plans on having a security building or something to prevent vehicle traffic from entering into the truck traffic area. This looks like it's just going to be signage and nothing, no, no physical barriers to prevent the commingling of traffic.
That's, that is true. Yes. We're going to do it with signage. Again, security was a bigger issue when it was the food distribution facility.
Okay. One thing looks like now with more impervious coverage is the previous. is the previous plan had designated snow accumulation areas. You're leaving very little space on this property to where to pile snow.
I think we still provide some shoulders along all the edges of the paved areas where snow can be plowed and off to the, to the north as well. If, if, they also have the large area up front as well, so. It's again, it's one of those things where we've tried to provide it where we can without cutting into our buffers. And if, if snow removal becomes an issue, then it would have to be taken off-site, I would imagine.
Yeah, anything that could reduce drive aisles for emergency vehicle access, I don't, could cause a problem. Okay, that's, those are the, those are the big changes that I noticed for now. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, is, is it going to be one tenant or multiple tenants?
The building, the building's set up for multiple tenants. It, it could be one if the right tenant comes in. However, they're anticipating that it could be multiple tenants as well.
So you could have six different operations going on in here?
Potentially, I think the way that it's set up right now, there's eight potential. Yeah, four in each building.
So like Dick said, you're probably going to have truck traffic twenty-four-seven through here with that many?
It would likely be off-peak, as Dan mentioned.
And again, can you go again where all the trucks are exiting from?
The, the truck exit is down on South Water Street, south of the site.
All the trucks are going out that way?
Yes, yeah, and it will be left turn only, so they come back to Route Five.
And there's a house right in front of there too, correct? On South Water?
Um.
By the exit?
Is there? Direct, I think it's directly across from our exit.
Yes.
That's where our exit was for Sardili as well.
Yeah, I know that. And they were obviously notified?
This is site plan approval, which does not require a public hearing or notification.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Oh, one more thing, dumpsters, I didn't see any dumpsters on the print.
They are located in the, in between the two buildings. I believe there's eight locations that are shown on the layout plan. If you look on the layout plan, it's in the loading dockets, near, near.
Okay.
In addition to that, most of our tenants do a trash compactor connected to the building at one of the loading docks.
Ann, comments, questions?
I guess my comment is because it seems to be a development on spec and we don't know what the tenants are. In a bus condos, and as someone said, its driveway out twenty-four-seven would mean headlights into Noreen Farmer's house.
No, her house isn't across the street from her driveway.
Oh, okay. So the house that is opposite the driveway is?
The truck, the, across from the truck access, if that's the one that Jim was referring to.
Could I speak, is there anyone on board? This is Marty.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Marty.
Okay, my question is, I know that it could be potentially twenty-four-seven. And obviously, there may be some loading time, but where are any excess trucks going to be stacked? I don't see any kind of reserved parking. I mean, this is fine if you have eighty trucks, but what if you have excess? Where, where's, you know, I would like to think it would be a booming business, I'm hopeful. And is there refrigeration possibly? Because when trucks are standing, they're just sitting there running, humming away. And the noise situation might be a disturbance to some of the closer neighbors.
In addition to the eighty loading docks, there are thirty-three, I believe, additional tractor-trailer spaces located near the south end of the building, as well as eighteen additional box truck spaces.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm hoping that's adequate. I don't know how, you know, when things are moving, shuffling in and out, you know, because they've got to have time to load, pull out, get another truck in. And I'm just, I'm just curious how that operation and coordination goes.
I believe there, there's adequate parking for the trucks for the use.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ann.
I guess I was worried about storage of hazardous explosive material there, abutting neighbors. And on Marty's comment on the idling, I'm wondering if there's some kind of shore power where they can plug in if they're refrigerated and need to stay running.
If there is the need for, if there are refrigerated trucks and they need a place to, to power, then that would be something that would have to be added, which we can certainly do if the need does arise. With regard to the storage of hazardous materials, I, I don't believe it's that type of a warehouse facility. If it's, if, depending on the tenant, if they have some, they'd probably have a designated area like any other business that would, they'd have to store their, their hazardous materials and treat them and store them and have wastes dealt with properly.
Yeah, I guess when I think of a warehouse, I think of a product or a commodity as opposed to, I didn't even think of it as storing waste. I saw it more as gaseous chemicals or something like that could be potentially, you know, it could be a chemical distribution operation in a warehouse.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a warehouse use, then it'd simply be transfer.
Yep, but it could be storing.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that fits into your, if that, if something like that would have to come back to the commission?
My comment on that is I know that if you, any kind of chemicals or pesticides or any of that, that has to be addressed through the fire marshal, and it has to be notified. So if there was ever a fire and a chemicals, they need to be aware of what is being stored to protect the firefighters and the community. So any of that, that's a, that's a regulation through the Department of Consumer Protection, pesticides and chemicals.
That is correct, Marty. But just to address that, obviously, we're going on spec. And any user we have come in will have to obviously go through a code review, fire review, and obviously, we'll submit construction documents for their outfit. So there are checks and balances based on uses that may come into this type of product. In general, what we typically see is a five percent office component for any given user, and the balance warehouse typically racked. A lot of it for this type of product is going to be your e-commerce companies, your infill, last-mile type, type companies. And we also, you know, have, you know, a good example is, you know, Plumbing Supply Company, and just kind of smaller things like that, electrical supply, you know, that needs fifty thousand feet. So they're typically not the heavy industrial use or chemical use that, that you see, you know, in heavy industrial zone.
Excuse me, was that Dan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ann, does that answer your question? Do you have any follow-up questions?
I guess I would just ask the applicant that if it's, if the trucks are going to be refrigerated and need to idle for a long duration, that they look at requiring either APUs on the trucks or providing and requiring the use of shore power. In the case of the prior applicant, he owned the truck fleet, so he had control over the idling. And so it was a non-issue.
Yeah. With respect to that, this is Dan again. We, we build and self-manage our buildings. So if there's any issues with the neighbors, you're contacting us directly, and our employees are dealing with any nuisance items that come up.
You okay, Ann? Oh, go ahead.
I guess it brings me back to when you brought up nuisance. We don't have a noise ordinance in town and frequently.
Well, we do, in the zoning, in the zoning district, we do. Remember, this is an M1 and B1, so this is.
So if there's truck gates banging in the middle of the night, there, for the sake of the neighbors, you can address it.
That's correct. We have staff twenty-four-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tim, do you have any questions? Not, not Tim Kuhn.
As far as me, like, everything's pretty well been asked, that I would have thought of. No, I have no comments or questions.
All right. I got a couple of questions of Tim. So the, the Sardili's produce, the type of delivery vehicle that we expected was probably a single-unit vehicle. I don't recall them being tractor-trailers.
No, there, there were several spaces.
Oh, there were several, okay.
Yes.
Because I was going to ask you, did you consider a, a long trailer in your design of the, the corner radii and the ability to maneuver around the building?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Regarding the easement, has that, is that a done deal? Is that, there's, there's made reference in our, Ruben brought it to our attention that there's an, there's a drainage and there's a drainage easement agreement. Is that, is that all taken care of?
I believe it has been executed. Is that the case, Dan?
That is correct. We have a drainage easement across Farmer's property to discharge ultimately to the river.
Okay, very good. In the last question I have is, do you think that there's a need for sidewalks for employees who want to go out during lunch? They're not taking their car. I mean, I, I, I don't see any food establishments really within walking distance. Well, I, I guess, what's the restaurant there at the corner of South Main Street? Yeah, Roberto, other than Roberto's. Yeah, Elizabeth, well, that's, that's, that's a pretty good hike. If you only get a, a short lunch break, you may not be able to make it. And any opinion about the need for sidewalks?
Well, without, without having sidewalks along Route Five, getting them out to Route Five is one thing, and then it becomes an issue with where do they go from there? Do you want them, you know, walking up and down Route Five or trying to cross Route Five without sidewalks to get to the areas where, where they might want to go for food and stuff like that? It, it's almost better not to have it, to encourage them to drive out and get there so that they're not trying to cross Route Five.
Yeah, and Tim, this is Dan Lacy again, just to add to that. From an ownership perspective, our preference is not to have pedestrian traffic, especially in a warehouse industrial operation. You know, truckers are coming in and out. Sidewalks are good, you know, obviously for exercise, but typically, the breaks and lunch breaks that your typical job and job description has there, most of our tenants choose to do a, you know, a break room at the microwave fridge. Most people don't have an hour lunch break to go in the, in, in these type of settings to go out. So our preference from a safety perspective is not to have internal sidewalks.
Okay, I'll follow up with any other commissioner. Any, any, anyone think of any other questions for Tim or Dan?
Yeah, I have one more. Dan, I, I think you answered this, and I'm not sure I heard it correctly. The Silverman Group itself will, will have a management, will, will have management people there on a daily basis?
Yes, we, we're a private, family-based firm that operates in eighteen different states. And either side of twenty million square feet of commercial space and about four thousand apartments. We've got a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty people deep firm. And regionally, we do have local management, you know, not just based out of New Jersey. We have direct employees in each market that we operate in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mike?
Yeah, Joe, when you were going down the sidewalk discussion, I, I was also thinking inside the perimeter for employee parking, once they park their vehicle, for them to get to the facility itself, it just looks to me like it's just a, you know, a continuous drive aisle, and there's no designation for employee walkways or crosswalks, or I don't even see any, any handicap parking designation.
Yes, if you look on the layout plan, Mike, the handicap parking is shown. It meets the requirements for the number of spaces that are out there. In addition, there's a, the sidewalk runs the full length of the building adjacent to the parking lot. So if somebody parks, they just, obviously, they've got to cross the aisle to the other side to get to the sidewalk.
Okay, I was, I was looking at the, the site plan. Thank you.
Yes, Jim?
Yeah, on South Water Street, since, since we have eight different operations going on here, there's a lot of traffic queuing up at that light. How can we guarantee that there's not going to be a backup of trucks coming out of there, going on South Water Street and getting stuck at that light? You can only hold maybe five or six or seven tractor-trailers in queue at one time there.
Yeah, when, when we did the traffic study previously for Sardili, we, we used those numbers to determine the stacking lane and, and the length of the widening that we would provide the right turn lane. And you're assuming that that's going to be adequate for this very similar use. Again, it would go through.
Sardili's, they control their own destiny. They were one tenant. This has eight different tenants, so different trucks can be leaving at the same time. Whereas Sardili's, I think, were kind of staggering their trucks.
Well, I'm not certain that's the case. They, they were, most of their trucks left in the, in the early morning and came back throughout the day. So I think most of those, their trucks were leaving at the same time. But again, this will go back to the, to OSTA, the Office of State Traffic Administration. So if they have concerns about that, that'll be addressed there as well.
Because I, I travel the road every day, and that light backs up even just regular vehicle traffic. Never mind eighteen-wheelers, it's, it's pretty busy over there on, on peak times.
Yep, and again, as Dan mentioned, we don't expect there to be significant truck traffic during peak times.
That's all I have for now, Joe.
Anyone else? Ruben, do you have any, any comments other than what you, you prepared for us? Any, any words of wisdom on this one?
I think the application is complete. It's a great fit for the town. Tim and the consultants have worked diligently in addressing the issues. The site is available, it has a proper zoning. I thank the applicant for thinking of East Windsor. From a planning perspective, this is a sure-in, it's a good thing for the town. So I recommend, you know, keep going for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments from commission members? Yes, Mike?
There was mention, there was mention of possibly adding two terms of conditions of approval.
Yes, I got those notes too, yes. So the person, why, why, why don't we talk about those before we start to talk about making a motion for approval? What exactly are we, so regarding conditions of the fire marshal, it's specific to hydrants? So, Tim?
Yeah, he sent out an email and it was essentially that the hydrant, access to the hydrant on Wagner Lane and another hydrant somewhere to be placed south of the building. And we'd be happy to accommodate those as conditions of approval.
Tim, is there a data, the memo of the correspondence?
Let's see, it is today, June 23rd at 11:19. It was sent to myself, Ruben, and Len Norton from Rich, Austin. If you'd like, I can read it.
Sure, yeah. Why don't you just read it for the record kindly?
Okay. This is Rich. "Review the plans. Had some concern with the 15-foot turn radius on the South Water Street. I don't believe it's a real problem. My main issue would be the lack of water access. The most useful hydrant is located on Wagner Lane, but the fire department will need an access road from Wagner Lane to the buildings. Would also like another hydrant on the south end of the buildings. There are hydrants on the east side of South Main Street. Unfortunately, all traffic would need to be shut down." Richard Austin, District Fire Marshal.
So maybe we should say that the issues from the fire marshal identified in this June 23rd, 2020 memo be addressed?
It's actually an email, Joe.
It's an email?
Yes.
It's an email. Yeah, because I don't have a copy of that.
Neither do we.
Okay.
Joe?
Yes.
What if we do something to the effect of additional hydrants will be added to the site plan to the satisfaction of the District Fire Marshal?
Not, very good. That works. It's more specific.
I wrote that out, so.
That's fine.
Joe, our offer. I can concur that Lenny did receive that also today.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
And that would be condition 18?
That would be condition 18, correct. So if there's no more comments for Tim or Dan, I'll entertain a motion for a site plan modification approval.
Okay, I'll offer it up. I make a motion to approve the application of the Silverman Group requesting site plan modification for the development of two 123,100 square foot buildings, full warehouse distribution facility, and an increase of 62,000 square feet of a new, of a new impervious surface. Subject property location at 12 South Main Street, MAP 81, Block 11, Lot 82, and MAP 71, Block 11, Lot 3AI, 06A, and 010. In the B1 and M1 zoning districts, the applicant will comply with the terms of, in terms of conditions, 1 through 5 on what would be page 3, 6 through 17 on page 4, continued 17 on page 5, and the addition of condition 18 stating that additional hydrants will be added to the site plan to the satisfaction of the District Fire Marshal. This is in accordance with a memo from Ruben Flores Marzan AICP dated June 18th, 2020.
Mike, may I go back to the original motion? There's 223,000, look at the number there. It's not correct.
There is a typo in the motion. That's why I didn't read it as written.
Okay, so it's 123,100, not 123,1,000.
That is how I read it. As well as I did not include the 15.2 acres, because as we discussed, that was not supposed to be included.
Thank you.
So there's no need for Mike to amend his motion? So there's a motion on the table for approval of a re-subdivision for, excuse me, for a site plan modification? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Sullivan? Is there any comments? Here or none? I have a call for vote for approval. All those in favor, raise your hand, aye?
Aye.
Time, so we have five, so that's an approval. We're, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate you considering East Windsor, just like Ruben indicated.
Absolutely. Just in wrapping up on my end, just to let you know, we are, we did take title. We own the property. We're not contract purchaser. And I did release construction documents about two months ago, and we're committed to going on spec and hopefully breaking ground later this year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Moving along to other business, informal discussion, 341 East Road, East Windsor Solar One, presentation by Verology, I hope I could pronounce that correctly, for proposed 4,975 megawatt solar array to be located on 30 acres of a 73-acre parcel owned by Catholic Cemeteries. The nearest intersection is East and Middle Roads. And I suspect there are people here for that.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and commission members. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm with Veragee, and we represent East Windsor Solar One. I have a presentation that I can walk through and I can share my screen if that's helpful. I do believe you should have the materials in front of you as well.
Does everyone have the information in front of them, or we want to allow Jason to give up access? Does everyone have a copy of Brian's presentation?
I do.
I do.
I do.
So, Joe, this is Jason. I think there are some interested residents who probably don't have access to it.
Okay.
He can share the screen if he wants to.
Okay. Brian, would you do that?
Yes, I'm prepared to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Did we have that in an email?
Yes.
Okay, can you all see my screen here? She should see a presentation here of Veragee on top.
Yep, yeah, you're good to go.
Okay, great. So we will get into it here. Like we just mentioned, the proposed East Windsor Solar One is located at 341 East Road in East Windsor. And on the phone with us this evening, we have a few of our colleagues from Veragee and a couple of our professional consultants as well. So we have with us Will Herschel, who's our Veragee CEO, Steven Danino, who's our Chief Operating Officer at Veragee, myself, Brian Fitzgerald, I'm our Director of Development. Kyle Perry is our Project Engineer. And on with us from Allpoint Technology Corporations is Brad Parsons. Brad is a professional engineer here in the state of Connecticut with 17 years of experience in permitting and developing solar energy projects and other development types, and as well as Patrick McBurney from Gaffney Bennett Public Relations. So this evening, we'll get in on the project specifications. We'll take a look at a site plan and a few renderings. We'll touch on project characteristics. Then we'll take a look at the current and ongoing public outreach campaign. And then have a look at a quick carbon emissions analysis and then touch on the timeline schedule. So a quick company overview here, Veragee is a Hartford-based renewable energy development company focusing on solar for New England and the greater US, with a primary focus here in Connecticut. We work with municipalities, small and large businesses, as well as landowners across the state in developing renewable energy and solar energy-specific projects. So the project location is at the parcel at 341 East Road in East Windsor. The proposed capacity of the project is just under 5 megawatts, 4.9 megawatt AC. We will plan to install 19,526 solar panels mounted to a driven post-fixed tilt racking system, all connected to stream level inverters. So the electricity production from the system is monitored remotely, as well as have the ability to de-energize the system remotely. Quick note on the proposed engineering design currently. We are proposing a 17-foot row spacing at 17 feet from the backside of a southern row to the front side of a northern row. So we have 17 feet in that inter-row spacing. Go into greater detail on that one. Take a look at the site plan. So the total acreage of the parcel is just under 80, about 79 acres. The project area inside our fence is about 23.7, with our limits of disturbance outside the fence extending to about 5.9 acres. So all in total, we're planning to use about 29.1 acres of the greater 79-acre parcel. So site selection is a key component to these projects and one of our, you know, most frequently asked questions. And really, the key for this project and how we ended up here at this parcel in East Windsor is that the parcel itself has very, very low slopes, 1% to 2% slope in a southeast of the direction. And this made it compatible and being able to design to Connecticut deep standards from a stormwater general permit perspective, as well as giving us the ability to adhere to the current Appendix I guidelines, which are stricter and more stringent requirements on solar energy projects for development in Connecticut. So another key factor is no adverse environmental impact. And when we look for sites, a key factor for us is no clearing or limited clearing of parcels. And on this project, we are not proposing any tree clearing whatsoever. Another key factor in this category is, you know, wetland habitats, vertical habitats, and setbacks from these habitat areas. And another key aspect for this parcel is that we are adhering to state and local setbacks from all wetlands and vertical habitats and even extending beyond those setbacks. So, or well setback from all wetlands and vertical habitats on the site. And then a third key factor is having the proximity to the electrical infrastructure required to interconnect the facility to the ever-source distribution network. Now, this is key, because this can often weed out the viability of a project from day one. And it's important to note that the infrastructure in this area can be, can support our project and with a little bit of upgrades proposed to the distribution network, we'll be able to develop and install a project. So touching on a little bit of public need here. It's important to note that East Windsor Solar One is going to support Connecticut's energy policies. The project's going to provide clean, renewable, solar-powered electricity and assist the state in meeting its legislatively mandated obligations under our current renewable portfolio standard. And that standard is a 40% Class 1 renewable energy resource allocation by the year 2030. And it's important to note, obviously, solar is a Class 1 resource. This project will help Connecticut reach those goals directly. So specifically, the project is proposed to produce about 9,516 megawatt hours of Class 1 renewable energy each year without any air emissions or greenhouse gas emissions emitted from the project itself. So this is equivalent offset of about 6,729 metric tons of CO2 each year, or the equivalent of powering about 1,139 average houses each year as well. So it's also important to note that the project's going to produce most of its electricity at peak times when demand for electricity is greatest. Moving into a couple of key characteristics about the East Windsor Solar One project here. And like we just mentioned about site selection, you know, what we have in front of us is a very simple, straightforward construction process with very minor site work needed to activate the site and get it ready for potential racking installations and then module installations. And again, we're not proposing any tree removal for the project site. And we will take a look at a design here on the next slide. So the project is also going to be a quiet neighborhood with very minimal onsite activity post-construction. There's not going to be any emissions or odors emitted from the project area, and it's effectively silent. There's inverter fans, excuse me, that produce an ambient hum while they're operating. But outside of that, there's no loud or obscure noises. So there's not going to be any additional requirement on Town of East Windsor services either. So the project is not going to produce any additional traffic levels after construction. It's not going to consume any water. It doesn't consume any traditional fuel sources. And it's not going to, you know, send any kids to school, obviously, from that perspective. So there's really no burden placed on Town of East Windsor from a town services perspective. It's also important to note that there's going to be economic benefits to Town of East Windsor. And East Windsor will be a property taxpayer. And our current goal is to work towards executing intact stabilization agreement with East Windsor so we can better define those values in terms of the taxes to be paid to Town of East Windsor. So tying in all the environmental components here, what we produce when we submit the project to the Connecticut Society Council is an environmental assessment. And Brad and Allpoint Technology have been key and helpful in us producing that environmental assessment. And what we have come to is that the project would not have an undue adverse environmental impact. And ultimately, that's a culmination of various studies, wetland habitat impacts, soil surveys, cultural resources surveys, visual assessments, as well as a number of other environmental surveys. And really, that's what we're going to put in front of the Connecticut Society Council and what they will be looking to, you know, make a decision on the project about. So I will pull up the site plan here in a minute. And on the right of our screen here is just our proposed landscaping protocol for the areas of visual screening. And what we have here is a two-row approach with an effective five foot on center, with the first row being 10 foot on center, and then the next second row being directly in the middle to create, you know, a staggered approach, giving more cover throughout the year. So up on the screen right now is our current site plan for East Windsor Solar One. And to give everybody a little bit of orientation, what we are looking at here running north to south in the middle of the parcel is East Road. And then we have Middle Road running east-west across the page here. And the Ellington and East Windsor border is right about here where my cursor is. So we have effectively the last parcel here in East Windsor. The landowners of this parcel do own the parcel next door in East Windsor as well. But just for some orientation, taking a look at the design here now, we have an existing tobacco barn that is going to stay in place. That is going to be outside of our fenced-in area. It was key in our discussions with the current farmer on the land, who's a tenant farmer, leases the property as well from the Cemeteries Association. And he continued to have access, undisturbed access to that barn. So we made sure to give the proper amount of setbacks from that area so we'll be able to use that as well. So the project will get access from East Road over here on the western side of the array itself. And then, like I mentioned before, we have a fixed tilt racking system with 17 feet of row spacing. So you're seeing the black rectangles move east to west across the page here. Those are the solar panels that will be mounted on that fixed tilt racking system oriented effectively due south. So a current note on the continued land use of the parcel. Like I mentioned, the current farmer will be continuing to farm the parcel right up to our limits of disturbance here. And then in the areas moving here to the north on the eastern side of the parcel, following the Ellington East Windsor border. So we'll take a quick look at the Viewshed Analysis Map here. And this slide gives us a bit of context again here. So here is our project area in dark orange. And then the black circle around the project area is in one-mile radius. As you can see, we do have the Ellington East Windsor border and the Town of Ellington, Ellington Ridge Country Club over here to our southeast. So zooming in, we are going to look at three different photo locations from number one here to the northeast of the parcel, number two to northwest, and number three to the north. So this photo here was taken earlier this spring from the East Windsor-Ellington border that is northeast of the parcel, looking southwest at an approximate distance of about 130 feet to the project site. Like I mentioned, that is the existing barn that's in the northern extent of the project area, of the project parcel, excuse me. area of the project parcel, excuse me. And then here is what we anticipate the array would look like after we layered in the array and some initial landscaping here on the northern side. Like we mentioned here, it is the intent of the current farmer to continue using the area outside of the array to farm. So on a seasonal basis, obviously, as you're familiar with, this will be farmed with different So moving to photo number two here, we are at the Middle Road and East Road intersection that is just outside of the northwest corner of this parcel looking southeast. And again, there is that same barn in the northern area of that parcel. And then here is the proposed facility layered in after. And like I mentioned, this is East Road that goes south, and we do make access on East Road over here about halfway down the solar facility itself. And then here to the northern boundary, you can get another look at that initially proposed landscaping where we have, you know, evergreen vegetation currently in our variety in a staggered two-row approach extending the entire northern fence line. And then behind that defense in this area will be a black vinyl coated fence with privacy slots as well. And then the third photo location is taken from the north on Jesse Lane, looking south at just over a tenth of a mile to the site. The area focus is going to be in the center of the photo. And this is the second photo here with the proposed array layered in. And you can see again, that is that landscaping there and then the array, the fence line would be behind that landscaping to the south. So from there, we'll touch on our public outreach and the public outreach plan that is currently active and has been active since June 9. On June 9, we published the verge.com backslash backslash East Windsor Solar One website, which is available to the public and has been available. It serves as a resource for visitors to go and and contact the members of Verge directly to ask any questions or send over, you know, information if they'd like to provide or request additional information from that perspective. And on that date, we also mailed out initial letter letters, a fact sheet and a FAQ sheet on the proposed project. And these items were mailed to all the direct neighbors of the parcel, including town officials in East Windsor and Ellington as well. And then looking here to the bottom of the page where we have a timeline, and we'll take it back to December of 2019, where we had our official Connecticut Siding Council pre-petition filing meeting with town officials where we introduced the project. We showed a site plan that looked similar, but it's been changed a little bit over time. And we talked about, you know, the environmental conditions of the site, why we chose the site, public need, and our anticipated timeline. From the end of 2019, we continued working on developing the project through the beginning of 2020, where we had correspondences with Connecticut Deep and received a letter from them stating no material impact to core forest habitat in May. And then in early June, we held another project update meeting with town officials. This was a Zoom meeting where we provided an update on timing. We took a look at some additional materials and then ultimately led to scheduling our meeting here this evening on the 23rd. But prior to that, on June 9, we had initiated that public outreach campaign, sent those letters and materials to neighbors of the project parcel and published that website live as well. On June 9, we also held a meeting, another Zoom meeting with the Department of Agriculture, where we talked to them about our our plans to keep agriculture productivity within the array area. And one of the ways we are proposing to do that would be working with the current farmer on the parcel to farm the inter row spacing of the of the rows of modules. Like I mentioned, we have 17 feet, and we're currently exploring options to grow hay and other crop in that space and are are getting pretty close to having a formal proposal to send back to the Department of Agriculture on that note. Continuing here to the end of June, we're holding a presentation with Planning and Zoning Commission this evening to talk about the project, you know, answer and ask any questions, also provide a forum to get in touch and continue to propose modifications to the project leading up to a submission to the Siding Council. And then for the balance of June and then into July, we'll continue these discussions and consultations with town neighbors and stakeholders while we finalize our project plans and get ready to submit to the Connecticut Siding Council. One more slide here on the public outreach campaign. You can see here on the left of the screen, we have a snapshot of the project website where we give the location, the proposed installed capacity, how much energies can produce each year, a quick description, and then a project updates bar. Apologies if that's hard to read, but that just says, you know, East Windsor Solar One is on the June 23 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting agenda, just to make sure that that information is readily available to visitors so that they can attend if they feel the need. And then the project information. So the fact sheet in the FAQ document that we mentioned prior are also available for download here on the website. And then you'll see here a contact section just below the screenshot. There is a contact form for visitors to send messages that end up in our inbox directly. So we take those messages, we read them, and we respond to them as quickly and as efficiently as possible, and then continue conversations via phone or meetings if we need to. And then from here, we have a snapshot of the page views here on the left going up. We have two, four, six, eight, and 10 over our timeline and the website being launched. As you can see, there was a little activity when we pushed it live, and then probably a little more activity once the letters landed in neighbor's hand, and then some additional activity as we were available on the agenda. So from here, just a quick slide on the environmental benefits, and I won't read through all of these. But like we mentioned earlier, the project is going to produce enough renewable energy each year to offset the equivalent of 6,729 metric tons of CO2 emissions, as well as power over 1,139 houses each year. Looking into our current timeline and schedule, standing at the top of the page here, submission to Connecticut Siding Council, Connecticut Deep, and municipal outreach. So currently in June, we are, you know, here at the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. From here, we look to submit the project to Connecticut Siding Council in July and also apply for a Connecticut stormwater general permit with deep in July as well. So like I mentioned on the previous slide, prior to getting to those submissions, you know, we'll continue these conversations, make sure we can, you know, make accommodations if necessary because the designs are final. And then an anticipated receipt of approvals and construction commencement. If we are able to here to stay on schedule and submit to the council in July, we anticipate a receipt of a decision from the Connecticut Siding Council sometime in October, which would give us the ability to activate the site and commence construction in November. And then from there, we anticipate it would take about four to five to six months tops to complete construction and receive a permission to operate from EverSource in April of 2021. And with that, Mr. Chair, we can take we can take questions at this point. We can look at additional parts of the deck and discuss further.
Great, thank you. So, well, we'll go around. Dick, Dick Sullivan, do you have any comments for Brian, or the team?
No, no, I don't. You know, solar, solar, we've kind of seen them all over the place, you know? They're clean, they're neat. And, you know, we don't have any town expenses tied tied in with them.
Okay, thank you. Mike, any comments or questions for the team?
I just had one. So you're the project site is 79 acres, you're going to fence in 23.7 acres. The project acreage outside the fence, the 5.9 acres, what type of activities? That's still part of the area that's going to be farmed? Are you going to have any type of solar activity outside the fenced area?
Great question. This is Brian here from Verge. So outside of the fenced area, there's not going to be any additional solar activity. That additional acreage that makes up the balance of our limited limits of disturbance pretty much encompasses the landscaping to the north of the fence line and then a stormwater management quality basin that we will be installing to the south of the project area as a as a requirement of deep's appendix I for our stormwater general permit.
Okay, so it's just going to be basically a site modifications outside the fence line. And then and then that remaining 29-point acres is going to be what's going to be farmed?
Correct, yes. The current farmer is going to farm essentially right up to those limits of disturbance and up the area to the northeast of the parcel, as well as the balance of the parcel that extends south.
So it kind of shows that you're not planning on any kind of screening, which I would say like to be to the east of the array. And that's probably predominantly because Middle Road has no development in that area. And if it were to become developed, would you intend to add screening to that?
That's a great question. And, you know, that was that was our thought from from the start of why we initially stayed away from the screening in that area. But what we can look to, I think, to the extent it does become developed, would be, you know, a combination of the continued agricultural use on that side of the of the project area, as well as, you know, the addition of privacy slots through the fence there. And then potentially addition of some of the similar evergreen arbivites and other Spartan unicorn-type plants across that area.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How do you guys plan on tying back into the existing grid? It looks to me that you have just a single-phase basic system on the street right now.
Correct, yes. So Jim, this is Brian Fitzgerald from Verge. And we will be working with EverSource to extend three-phase to the east across Middle Middle Road. We'll be coming, the project ultimately going to feed the distribution circuit that goes back to the Barber Health Substation that is to the southwest of the project area. We will be tying in to that distribution circuit on Middle Road that will be upgraded to three-phase.
And one more question on the solar array print, I did not see any buildings for switch gear. Is there going to be a building on that property somewhere?
Brian Fitzgerald here again with Verge, and there's not going to be a building. We're going to have pad-mounted switchgear on the on the parcel itself. So no buildings for switchgear, just pad-mounted.
Just all external stuff, weatherproof?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Frank, any comments, questions? If you want to speak, you're on mute.
No, I everything seems seems in line with me. I mean, between Jim and Mike, and they've answered all the questions I might have had. Seems like a great project, a great addition to the town, and it's probably the biggest taxpayer in East Windsor.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for Jason, but I'll wait for that. Ann, questions, comments?
I think it's a great project. We're all power consumers, and knowing there's more and more solar with no emissions coming for our area, I think is great, and I'm glad they found a site in East Windsor.
Thank you. Marty?
Yep.
Anything to add?
Nothing really to add, other than maybe a question about security. I just, you know, we've always had these issues with quads and type kinds of activities. I know the fencing is there, but I'm just curious if there's going to be some way to monitor that. Do they have off-site cameras or something to keep an eye on things or someone periodically?
Yeah, hi, this is Steve Dino with Verge. So yeah, we are leading security measures are as you indicated, the fence. If it did become problematic in the area, we could entertain cameras, but there will be people visiting the site. We will have remote monitoring services available there, so we'll know if there's, you know, any disturbance to the array itself. And like I indicated, if it becomes problematic, we could we could always install camera system.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. It sounds like a great, great project.
Tim Moore, any comments or questions?
I had a question. You said at peak time is the the time that it's producing, is the peak time for electricity the middle of the day?
Correct, yes. And this is Brian Fitzgerald here from Verge. And the technical peak timing as it relates to EverSource's peak hours are from earlier in the day extending up to, I believe, around 7:00 or 8:00 PM at night, which in the summer months like June right now is just at the end of the productivity of the array.
Oh, okay, very see. And then I read that it would have two full-time jobs. What what jobs would it create?
So these are, this is Brian Fitzgerald here from Verge, and these are positions that Verge would would fill and hire directly as project managers and operations and maintenance technicians typically are operations and maintenance technicians are licensed electricians here in the state of Connecticut that do conduct those, you know, monthly to the annual site visit, sorry, monthly site visits that Steve Dino was mentioning, that monitor the the electrical productivity of the array and ensure it's producing up to our modeled standards.
Okay. And for maintenance, you might have already mentioned this, but is there a certain seed mix you use underneath or is it node? There's grass on the ground, right?
That's correct, yes. This is Brian here with Verge again. We would be using a specific seed mix for the interior of the array area. And this is, this goes back to the point I mentioned before, where we're currently working with the with the farmer out there to understand if there's a possibility for us to get creative and keep agricultural productivity in that inter row spacing. So if that were to happen, you know, we'd be able to keep some level of productivity coming from that array area. But if that were not to happen, yes, it would be certain seed mix, pollinator-friendly, specific, something with with like you like you and other species to help keep soil quality top-notch.
Okay. All right, so I figured. Thank you.
Brian, this is Joe Willett. Just a couple of questions and a comment. I thank you and the team for considering East Windsor, very much appreciated. With that, on that note, you had indicated why you guys selected this site. But out of curiosity, how how do you folks track down sites that meet your desired criteria? Do you reach out to the town and ask, do you have any available properties that meet this criteria, where you have like a development research team that go out and and look for these candidate sites? How does that happen?
Great question. And that's a that's a big part of our business and what we do. And really, you know, we reach out to a lot of landowners across the state of Connecticut. We use a lot of mapping resources, local GIS systems, you know, other available GIS through Connecticut Deep to look through environmental criteria. But ultimately, what it boils down to is we reach out to, you know, hundreds of landowners every year and the ability to find the right parcel with willing landowners in the right municipalities, you know, that you have a certain level of certainty around, that you can, you know, feel confident about a proposal that's not going to have any adverse environmental impact and feel confident about working within a municipality and being able to get that permit, that that project ultimately in a position to receive an incentive because it's competitive enough. And obviously, having the interconnection viability with EverSource, plus having a willing landowner, you know, it starts at working with as many landowners as we can and then getting in ultimately to a project like this one where, you know, we've had a good site, we've worked through interconnection requirements, and we're currently working through the development process with East Windsor and then ultimately state of Connecticut.
I noticed I read somewhere, even the information provided or some resource, that there's a life expectancy to the project. Did I think 35 years? Did I read that correctly, 35 years? Well, whatever, yeah, whatever it might be. Under what conditions would the would you folks consider terminating that earlier, where that's not really, I mean, something that you would ever think about doing?
Yeah, that's a good question. Again, this is Brian here with Verge, but I welcome, you know, Will or my other colleagues who feel it could help on this one. But, you know, to the extent, it just, you know, some unforeseen situation, I'm looking for the right terminology, but that's a good question. I don't know, Will, if you have anything specific.
I think it would really just be, you know, the ZREC contract that this project is involved with is a 15-year term. The electricity is actually not tied to a term, so the electricity portion of the revenue stream goes on as long as those solar panels produce electricity, which is across that useful life. So when you're you're dealing with a fully depreciated asset after, you know, 15 or 20 years, it really doesn't make sense to take it out if it's still being productive. If for some reason it wasn't productive at that point in time, that's when you might think of removing it earlier than that useful period.
Thank you. That was a good explanation. And my question is either for Brian or Jason regarding economic benefits to East Windsor. At what point would there be discussion regarding property tax benefits, tax stabilization agreements? Is that something that's ongoing now, where you wait until you have Siding Council approval? Or how does all that work?
So this is Jason, speaking on behalf of the town. We have had preliminary conversations with Verge about that, but I don't think we've gotten to the point where we've exchanged packages. As part of the my experience with the my limited experience with these companies has been that that's something that they want to have kind of locked down before they submit to the Siding Council, and something that that my team has had internal conversations about.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Brian or the team?
I have nothing.
Alan, do you have anything?
Thank you, Joe. I don't have any questions at this point in time. This is a good look at the project, so I look forward to hearing more about it.
So Brian, I don't think we have any more questions. Job well done, great explanation. And we wish you well in pursuing this project to completion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commission members. You know, we appreciate your time, obviously, and hopefully we'll be in touch shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, have a nice night.
Yeah, have a good night. Thanks again. Okay, next up under all other business is West River Farms' request for a five-year extension of a special use permit to allow a 69-lot PRD subdivision in four phases located at 329, 332, 339, and 341 Scenic Road. I think, Tim, you have this one, too.
Yes, and it's relatively straightforward. West River Farms, I believe you're all familiar with it, down off of Scenic Road. It was a 69-lot subdivision with special permits, and their five years is up. They have been able to complete, I believe, eight of the lots in Phase One. This was a four-phase project. So they're still have a lot more work left to do, and obviously, they they're looking to get another five-year permit in order to continue on.
And I my question is, and Ruben, feel free to weigh in here. Since this was a a public hearing when we approved it, this PRD, there is no need to have another public hearing for a time limit extension?
Joe, this is Ruben. That will be correct, because the parameters of the project are not changing at all. You're just approving the time extension, which is something that you can do statutorily. This is not a project that was approved before 2011. So those provisions that were set up by the Connecticut legislature to protect projects during the Great Recession wouldn't apply to this one. So this one is just that the timeframe for construction of the project is about to, you know, conclude. Therefore, they need the five-year extension. So that's all there is to it.
I certainly don't have, I personally don't have any objection to the five-year extension. I just have a question, though. What's the differentiation between extension of this product, project versus a time year, a time limit extension for an excavation permit? And we have public hearings for those. What's the difference between that? And where we're not changing conditions? Yep, go ahead.
I think that I think the difference is based on the land use, residential, lesser impact, and and the other project that you're the other type of land use you're referring to, it's much more intense, much more environmentally, you know, harmful, so to speak. The legislation, though, doesn't get into that level of depth in terms of, you know, splicing one land use over the other. But perhaps Tim has an opinion on that?
I believe in addition that your excavation permit has specific language in there that says the renewal has to come back to the commission. Whereas these typically with subdivisions, it's a five-year permit, and the statute says that, you know, if that five years is up, the applicant has the right to come back and just request an extension to continue the work if the public improvements haven't been completed at that time. There's no specific language in the subdivision regulations, I believe, that say that you have to come back and have another public hearing for that, unlike the excavation.
All right. Does any commission member have any questions for Tim?
Well, Lenny has no, Len Norton has no problem with it. But I am a little concerned about, okay, it's a five-year extension, and we've already had problems in town where a developer A gives it to developer B, and then developer B walks away. Now, granted, we get the bond, but the homeowner gets stuck with a project that is maybe never done. So so what can you do? Maybe a shorter extension helps move things along.
The legislation calls for that amount of time. It doesn't provide any language to have a term less than five years, if I remember correctly.
As a builder, I'm sure the guy wants to build as many lots as he can as fast he can. I mean, he wants to get the project done. It's kind of out of his control.
Yeah, I I'm looking at the plans here. I don't see anything specifically that would be considered, like development of communal property that may have been promised to somebody who purchased into this community expecting that a pool or some type of a recreational facility be built within a certain timeframe. So I can see those being as driving forces to try to maintain a timeline. But in this case, it doesn't seem to have anything that would that a purchaser would say that there is a we didn't do due diligence to get this completed on time for something that they were expecting.
Jim, comments, questions?
I'm good.
Frank?
I'm good. I'm okay.
Anne?
I'm good. I just have a question. And is the road work complete?
Phase one road is complete. Phase two has been boxed out and gravelled, but the other additional phases haven't been touched yet. So it's being completed in phases.
So complete means it has its final pavement on it. It's not just?
I do not think that Phase One has final pavement. I believe it's got binder course on it. Typically, you wait and put final pavement on after your houses are complete, so you don't destroy the pavement during construction. It is bonded for that final course, however.
And Lenny's comfortable that we hold adequate bond?
I believe it's the same bond that was issued initially, other than any releases that have been.
Yeah, I just wonder if the cost went up over time, or it stays flat, you know, if the town had to do it.
So Anne, this is Jason. As you know, that's been a concern with some other projects, and I'm wondering if Joe Sauerhoffer might have some perspective on that.
Are you with us, Joe?
Well, we do. We do have a memo from Lenny in our packet about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe Joe will come back. We'll move on. Marty, you have any comments or concerns?
I realized I was on mute, sorry. Anne brought up my attention about the degree of the bond. As time goes on, things inherently get more expensive. So I just wanted to make sure that that was tweaked as part of a condition of the extension, I would think.
Okay, Tim Moore, any comments, questions?
I agree. I think a shorter time period is good, but if we can't do that, then I'm good with it.
And I got a question, though, for Tim Kuhn on one of the conditions, Condition Six of the original approval, talks about wells and the abutting owners. And out of curiosity, are you aware if this has ever been pursued, if there's ever been any concerns from the neighbors? I know there was a big, big to-do when the project was proposed, and disturbance to the groundwater. And this Condition Six was added as a concession to the some of the abutters.
I do not believe anything has come of it with regard to complaints from the budding property owners. I have, I'm unaware of any with regard to their well use.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments that we haven't already talked about? With all due respect to Ruben, I I'm not convinced that this this reapproval for an additional five years is not warrant an additional public hearing based on my read of the statutes. But considering that I'm not a land use professional, I'm going to yield to staff, and what Ruben says goes. But I'm not 100% sure, but that that just my personal opinion. Nonetheless, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve or to basically an additional five-year extension.
Joe, well, one one comment that we kind of, it says in Lenny's memo that the commission shall require proper bonding to be in place prior to such extension. Proper bonding can maybe lead toward there may be an increase in bonding, or somebody needs to recalculate what the bonding requirements are. It doesn't make me think that what that he's inferring that the bonding is adequate.
Well, Conditions number 14 and 15 talk about bonding in 16, for that matter. So I guess my question is, if we approve this as-is, we were going on the assumption that the existing bonds in place are adequate to cover the cost of the remaining conditions, should should the developer walk away from this project? Am I wrong in that assumption? Yes, Joe?
No, I don't believe they would be adequate, because I don't believe they posted a bond for the whole project. I think they broke into phases like most developers do.
Yes, but the reason they do it in phases is so that they don't necessarily, if you haven't started phases three and four, then you wouldn't necessarily have to complete those if somebody walked away. It's more or less a restoration at that point in time.
Right, and it feels alarming, Tim. I understand, but the problem we we've discovered in the town is Ben Kingshire. It started as a, it started off as one one developer, and then another developer went in there. And in between the switching of developers and everything, the bond got lost. And now we're on the hook for the final paving of Napoleon and Dempsey. And the driveways all meet the binder coat that are out there. It's, that's, that's the main concern. So if they're going to start their second phase, and I think their intention is just to renew their permit, correct?
For just an extension?
Yeah, so they're not, they're not moving to the next phase. I mean, you know, they, they do have some infrastructure in. I don't think I would be too concerned unless they're going to start building in the next phase. Hi, Joe, do you know by what Lenny meant that he specifically said in his memo, that he stated about Condition 32, that, you know, the commission will require proper bonding? I read that as that somebody's going to have to recalculate the amount of the bond to verify that there is an adequate bond to cover the uncompleted work.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think that bond has been reduced much. Am I correct?
I don't know. I don't know what's been reduced.
I I personally feel that what's in place should cover as long as they're staying in the same footprint. I don't think they've come back to us at all and asked for any, any erosion money or anything. And I, I apologize. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm just concerned. Our red flag is, is we just want to make sure that we hold enough money. As these projects get bigger, or as time goes on, cost factors go up with materials, and that's where we ended up with on the other development on Depot Street. So I don't, I don't particularly see any reason why I just not to renew it.
If you carefully read part of Condition number 15, the second last, or actually the last sentence talks about additional phases, and the way its word is suggest that there is no bond for additional phases. Talks about, should the applicant wish to open a new phase, the road and sidewalk must be bonded or completed in accordance with Public Act, blah, blah, blah. So that makes me leads me to believe there is no bond for anything above Phase One. So by granting approval, the developer has the ability to go, obviously, complete Phase One and go on to Phase Two. But reading this, I don't think there's any bond for infrastructure improvements for Phase Two. And all we're saying is an adequate bond must be in place. So what is the trigger to make that happen? What's assured that the bond is adequate?
Yeah, I think adequate is the key word here. Well, I guess if I can talk traditionally, when they try to reduce a bond, you know, it goes in front of the town engineer, and he goes out and he does a site visit and everything, and they talk about it. I would imagine they're not going to start Phase Two without posting that bond, because they're going to need site approval. All that's going to come in front of the town engineer and the planning department before they want to build a house and or start doing anything in in Phase Two. So that that triggers somewhat there. We're working on the developer agreement, and I don't know if this, the new development agreement is going to apply to existing developments. I would imagine at maybe at this point, we could have introduced it to them or something. But I'm going to tell you this, that staff I'm going to tell you this, that staff is, well, the engineering and public work staff is, is 100% behind. Nothing, this ever happening to us in any development again, before any reducing of any bond is, 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 we're right on top of it now. So I don't, I think past practice, you renew this and when they start doing work in phase two, they're going to need inspections. They, you know, they're, they're going to need us to come out there. We'll know they're in phase two and that should trigger us to say, you don't have bonding in place. We're not going to approve or allow you to do any work until the bonding is in place.
Yeah, and it's typical for a phase development like this, for the developer to just not request release a bond and just carry it over to the next phase. So that'll, it'll.
Yeah, and I, I think that's part of the reason why we do it this way is to try to economically help the developer. So he can afford, I mean, again, not all developers can afford to put the whole big bond and then just sit on it. And I mean, when was this project started? Almost three years ago?
No, it was approved in 20, I don't know when it was started, but it's approved in, in.
Five years.
Five years ago.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, believe me, we're, on, on the town side, I think we are working very, very hard in protecting the town going forth. So I don't think you'll have any worries. Plus, you know, it, it's with Tim and Tim knows he's going to have to answer the lead.
Can I add something here, Joe?
Sure can, Alan.
I just, you know, going to the, you know, the rolling the bond from a phase one over to a phase two and stuff like that. I think that's where we maybe have gotten into trouble in the past. I mean, that's fine to do as long as phase one is done. Like if there's anything left over, then you either, you know, if there's 15% left over, then you got to, you got to bond, you got to increase your bond by 15%, right, to, before you're going to move on. I mean, so I think that you, you kind of get into a situation sometimes as a developer, to pay Peter, to pay Paul, whatever. Um, you know, you're not quite finished, but you need some more money to finish. And so you're breaking into another phase and you kind of get behind the eight ball. And then all of a sudden, we've got $100,000 on our hands. So I, I think if we're going to, if we're going to like agree to, you know, roll a bond over to a phase two, we need to make sure phase one is either completely done or a percentage of what is, needs to be posted additionally, of what's not done.
Thank you.
And I think that's how this condition number 15 is written, that if you're going to go into another phase, you have to make sure it's bonded. So, and the word proper is in there as well. So I think that's the time, if, if, if you're still holding bond on phase one and they got to go into phase two, that's when it could be reevaluated. It's, all right, do we have enough bond for the completion of phase one and opening phase two?
Just by a show of hands, I'm, I'm just curious, are commission members, as presented, do you have enough information here to vote on this tonight? Or is there something that we want, is some additional information that we need? If you think you have enough information to, to vote on this, just, just raise your hand, just, just a straw poll. Curious is, so Dick, you don't think you have enough information tonight to make an informed vote, one way or the other?
Because we've been burned a couple of times, I'd, I'd like to see per se a history of. You know, and in other words, this project is five years going. There's only eight parcels sold or eight houses built. What were, did we as a town experience problems in the last five years with that site? And that we had to spank the developer, as it were, to get the things done that needed to be done.
Okay, thank you for your perspective. Mike, what, what was your informal? Do you have enough information tonight where you, you're looking for something more regarding more clarification on bonding or, or something else perhaps?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to get something a little more definitive from Len to say that he feels that the current bond is adequate for what needs to be completed.
And Jim, your opinion?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Joe. You, we usually hear from the public, like to hear if there's any complaints or if anything going on that we don't know about.
Well, that, that's just my, my personal interpretation of the statute. And I, I, I would have to say there, Ruben knows the laws and regulations better than I do. But that, that, that's just my opinion. Personally, and, and I think we have enough here, I don't think there's enough information for me tonight to make an informed decision. The whole, the whole thing regarding the bonding, I'm, I'm requesting, Tim, can, can you work with Public Works to get a better handle on what, what the amount is, what's covered? And where do we go from here? I don't think you're hearing anything regarding the, the willingness of the commission not to extend the permit another five years, whatever the numbers. That's not what I'm hearing. Nobody wants a, a half-built project. It's just some of the fine details. We just need a little more clarity on. Is that something?
I can follow up with Ruben and Len on, on what the bond is now and, and how it works between, you know, when they go from phase one to phase two, if, if they reevaluate the bond at that time or, or what the process is.
Does anyone have a difference of opinion that we, we're heading down, we're doing the wrong thing here?
Well, I just, I, you know, I just think Joe, Joe's got a handle on it. And I don't, I don't know if, if Ruben's correct or you're correct or who's correct. But I don't see what's to be gained really. Maybe some clarity is, is worth, is worth it. Maybe it is, but I just don't see it go on.
I guess, Joe, if I could just say one thing quick is where we've run into problem is the reduction of bonds. Not necessarily what we're holding, but throughout the years, they keep getting, you know, they come in and say, okay, we got the drainage done. We want our drainage bond back. We have this done. We have that done. And that's where we've got ourselves in trouble. We keep reducing them. And then if the development changes hands. And, you know, another case is we have a developer, you know, just decide he's going to sell his development rights. And, you know, the town knows nothing. So that's really where our, our problem lies. And to my knowledge, nothing's been reduced out there at all. But I would imagine planning, planning keeps better records than we do on that kind of stuff anyways.
Thanks, Joe, for clarification. And I, I, I agree. But it, it would have been nice if there was a little bit of history regarding what the ENS bond was, what the bond was for the infrastructure, what the bond was for, for anything else. And there's no evidence of that anywhere.
Joe, am I, am I correct that, I mean, even though this may have elapsed or expired, he, he still may continue on now that he's filed his application.
Yes, yes.
There's no detriment, no detriment to the applicant or a sweet delay.
Well, it, it would be to the next meeting if, if, if all, if all the information is available. Yes, no, we're, we're not creating an obstruction or a hardship on the applicant in any way. He's made the request. We're considering the request. We're asking for a little more clarity regarding the bonds. That's all. And I'm not hearing anything to the negative, like any dissension among the commission members about considering not extending the five-year, granting another five-year extension to complete the project. We, in my opinion, I think we all want to see that. Okay, with that, we probably should entertain, I should entertain a motion to continue the, the discussion for 341 East, excuse me, for West River Farms to our next meeting.
I'll make a motion to, I forgot how to talk.
What's your teeth in?
I, I make a motion to continue the discussion on the bond for West River Farms on, until the next meeting when more information is available.
Dick, may, may I ask if you reword your, your motion to be more aligned with, with what's on the agenda? Item B, the, the request is actually for five-year extension. The bond is one of the elements that we need information on. Do you have that in handy in front of you? Would you consider doing that? I can't force you to change your, your motion.
I make a motion to continue the request for a five-year extension of special use permit to allow 69 lot PRD subdivision in four phases located at 329, 332, 339, and 341 Scantic Road, multi-family development district and A1 zones.
There's a motion on the table to continue the request for a five-year extension. Is there a second?
I'll take a second.
Get it by, second by Mike. Any discussion? Here or none, a call for a vote. Those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Tim Moore? So that's five.
Aye.
Aye. So, so, so that's approved. So Tim, can you kindly collaborate with, with Joe and Lenny? And, and have something in, as, as well as, as well as Ruben to get all the paperwork in order?
Yep, will do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, take care.
Thank you. Hey, Joe, I apologize for Lenny putting more work on his plate, but I think in the long run, we'll, we'll all be thankful. This work needs to be done anyway. Just clarification of this, so.
No, I'll let Lenny know and it's something we're actively working on anyways. Like, you know, we need to get a handle on what we have for bonds out there. And, but with the developer's agreement, it spawned all this to allow us to, you know, really, really understand what's going on out there.
Okay, thank you. Next up, other old business, excuse me, other business. Continued discussions regarding Warehouse Point Stormwater Planning Study include Terry Han of LADA PC Land Planners. Hello, Terry.
How you doing?
Is all well with your family emergency? You.
I had to push my dad out of a ditch, so.
Oh, well, was, was he hurt?
No.
Okay.
And the car wasn't hurt or anything. It just, I'm the one with the big car to do the pushing.
Okay.
I got stuck doing the pushing. No, I just, just sort of misjudged a turn. So everything was fine.
Okay.
But no, I appreciate that. Tonight's discussion, again, I, for the record, this is Terry Han, Principal of LADA PC Land Planners. The discussion is regarding the Warehouse Point Stormwater Study. This discussion has been ongoing for a, quite a bit of time. And what we're trying to do is finish up, get to the point where we can do a public presentation and finish up the, the project. We're, we're almost finished. One of the critical components here is the discussion of the relationship between the stormwater study and the zoning that we're proposing. So the, the critical element for this evening is to make sure that we're all on the same page with respect to the impervious surface calculation within each individual zone. If I can share the screen, Jason?
Yeah, you should be able.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so, hang on, let me get the. All right, so if you recall, some time ago, the, what we did was we looked at the individual watersheds and what their existing impervious surface was, and then just sort of threw some numbers at what we thought would be maybe a, a target for future impervious surface calculation. And this original one was done by watershed. And some of the ideas here get translated into a zoning regulation. So the, let me go back to where my. Nope. Nope, okay, hold on. I can't do it. Sorry, I got to do it on an individual basis. Sorry. Okay. Does that work better?
Ah, there you go.
Okay, can you guys read it? Okay. So part of the stormwater calculations has looked at a series of scenarios related to that impervious surface calculation and broken down into the various different drainage areas. If you recall, there are six drainage areas. Drainage area one is basically the north side of the ditch, including Geysers Plaza. Drainage area two is the area that's across 91 at the big Y. And then drainage area three is the area from Bridge Street over to 91, but not including the Sports Dome. Area four is basically both sides of Main Street as you go from Bridge Street to about, let's see, just a little bit past where the culvert goes across for the Blue Ditch. Drainage area five is the Sports Dome and the area of Main Street, including the senior housing. And then area six is the wastewater treatment plant and that side of South Water Street. The stormwater calculations use a series of formulas to figure out what the peak flow of stormwater based on the rainfall for various different storms. You've seen this before from various different applicants. But in this case, what we're doing is we're tying in the critical part of the calculation, which is impervious surface with what will ultimately be what is allowed in the zoning regulation. So under the existing conditions, anything we have, are able to calculate what the peak flow is, which is the first part. This is scenario number one here, peak discharges by the various different watersheds. And then calculate an approximate elevation of the water that is, which we know is ponding at various different locations. And we spoke about these various different pond locations in one of the previous meetings. So for example, pond number one is essentially the pond that it pools up to the north of the Geysers Plaza. So that's related to drainage area one. Pond number two is from Bridge Street where the Geysers pipe comes across and discharges behind the church. And that runs all the way to Spring Street. And then there's an area, pond number three, which is between Spring Street and Holcombe. That's called Pond Number Three or the Holcombe Terrace Pond. And then pond number five, which is tied into drainage area five, goes from Holcombe to Main Street. Because that whole area is all tied by those, each one of those ponds is tied by a pipe. And then the I number 91 pond, which is from 91 culvert back behind the wastewater treatment plant and the Little League fields. So we can calculate out what we would estimate based on the rainfall amount of what would be the elevation of the water at that location. And these elevations are pretty darn close to the ones that we have observed over time. So that, for example, the elevation at the Holcombe or, or the Spring Street Pond, somewhere between 33, 34, 34 and a half feet, pretty much ties in exactly with the 34 contour that is sitting and is, is more or less the 100-year flood elevation, plus or minus, that is shown on our plans. So we know we can, we've had observation, we've had calculations, and we can see how that relationship between impervious surface generates X amount of peak flow of water, which then is translatable into elevations. So what we have done, and we've, we've talked about this before, is a series of scenarios to see if we can have any impact at all or what impact additional development would have. So the first thing that you typically do, and we've talked about this before, which is to say, okay, we know that impervious surfaces are culprit, let's reduce it. So the scenario number two just says, I'm going to take all my existing impervious surface and I'm going to get rid of 20% of it. And it shows that although there is a reduction of impervious surface, the actual peak pond storage. the actual peak pond storage elevations are not significantly changed. Even though there is, there are additions in the, the CFS rate or the, the, the peak discharge rates. So, for example, in the one-year storm, it goes down from 12 to nine, from 21 to 17, from 39 to 34. Those aren't, once it gets translated into what the actual water elevations are, is not significant. So, you had, in the five-year storm, you have a 38.06 elevation and a 38.02 elevation, which is approximately a half an inch. That's not to discount that, but for the amount of potential impact that would have on all of the properties throughout Warehouse Point, there's, this is generally not considered a reasonable return. You're not getting benefit from this. We would be, we'd get greater benefit, quite honestly, out of taking the impervious surface and putting it in infiltration, so there's not as much runoff, rather than just trying to get rid of the impervious surface. One of the things to note is anything above the 10-year storm is completely impacted by the Connecticut River. And the Connecticut River, if the Connecticut River goes over a certain elevation, and I believe that the elevation is approximately 27 or 28 feet at the 84 Pond, if the river is already at that elevation, it doesn't matter what the discharge is doing within Warehouse Point, because there's a backwater that is created so that the, the runoff from Warehouse Point just pools in these locations until the Connecticut River disappears. You know, goes, goes downstream. So, the next scenarios look at the relationship between the zoning and the impervious surface that's identified in the zoning to be able to sort of target what might be, what, what we might consider doing. So, the first thing that we had to do was look at the existing zoning. That's the one that you have right now. So, what that means is that compared to the existing conditions, there would be an impervious, there'd increase in impervious surface in drainage areas 1, 3, 4, 5, 1, 3, 4, 1, 3, 4, and 5, I believe. 6 pretty much stays the same. And there would be, of course, an increase in peak discharge and also an increase in the elevations, the pond storage elevations. So, it's a little hard to hear. So, we had, for example, in drainage area one, we had impervious area of 37%, and now we're talking about an impervious area of 39.95%, which generates an additional CFS in the peak runoff and approximately, I think it was approximately an inch of increased water storage at the Bridge Street Pond. So, there, the existing zoning will have an impact in those pond areas within the stormwater itself. And, and right now, the stormwater regulations that you have in place are set up to probably do the wrong thing here, which is the regulations would have you establish detention basins for all of the areas where you would have new construction. Plus, the zoning regulations put us in a situation where a great deal of Warehouse Point is existing non-conforming. So, all of the R1 zones, essentially Dean, Pleasant, anything that's more or less zoned R1, is already existing non-conforming with respect to lot size and other bulk requirements, because the R1 zone is really designed for somewhere else in town. It's not designed for Warehouse Point. So, we have a problem with being stuck. We know even where we aren't stuck, we're going to have an impact. So, the whole point of the project is to say, let's better manage where we want to have development and then tie in this development with impervious surface that we can handle and understand, you know, what impact that would have, instead of just sort of living with the zoning regulations that we've had for 40 years and thinking that we can't do anything about the stormwater impacts. So, what we have looked at is in this next one. Scenario number five is one of the things that we looked at is, okay, as an alternative or something to, to consider is, let's say we took the existing conditions and we upgraded all the pipes. So that the, the pipe and the area at each one of these ponds were excavated out, the pipes were changed. Apparently, there's some plans on record for increased culvert size and improvements at Spring and Holcombe already, as well as, I know that Len and Public Works have worked multiple times in trying to deal with the Bridge Street pipe. And would that provide some additional relief? Is, and is that going to be enough? So, based on the existing conditions, we can see that there is some improvement, and it does, in fact, help to regulate the pond storage elevations, but it doesn't really give us what we were looking for, which is enough room to consider how we might deal with future growth. It's, it's strictly a maintenance component. So, it's a good idea, and this is definitely something that we're going to recommend, but tying this into the zoning regulations, it still doesn't quite make any sense. The, the current zoning would, especially the M1 zones, would have a significant impact on the Blue Ditch, the, the way that they're currently laid out. So, if we go back, we're now looking at trying to come up with a final version of the zoning map with respect to impervious surface so that we can tie it back into scenario number four, which is kind of our built-out conditions for proposed zoning. And we've made a number of different changes and we're sort of doing a final tinkering so that, for example, the impervious area in drainage area one, you can see, if you compare that to scenario number three, has gone up significantly. There's an extra six acres or so of impervious surface. And the question is, where would that happen? And that, a lot of that is currently being attributed to the state property, which I think may be a misdirection. So, we'll, we'll look at what that would actually be. And quite honestly, that's one of the things that we want to look at for impervious surface in general, in terms of what would happen on that property. That's note number one. Note number two, in drainage area three, you'll notice that that area actually drops. The impervious area in drainage area three, which is the area where the, is the east side of the Blue Ditch from Bridge Street down to Holcombe, that that proposed, potential impervious surface has dropped. The reason why that potential impervious surface has dropped is because we took out, and intentionally took out the, so that it was not considered buildable, the wetlands. So, the, it's probably in scenario number three is overstated at this point, because that actually took the whole area of the watershed, multiplied it times the impervious surface calculation that we were using, and generated a total amount of impervious area, so that we're thinking that the 34.5 acres is much more realistic. Let's just put it that way. On drainage area four, the, there's a slight differential. It came down and that's between, that's the area along Main Street. It doesn't, it quite, doesn't quite make some sense, so we're still trying to sort that one out. It's, there's a, it's like a 1.5 acres difference, and it, that's more, much more likely to go back to the 44.93 based on the proposed. So, there's something a little bit odd there. In drainage area five, this is one of the areas that we want to talk about right now under the existing zoning. The area that is the Sports Dome and all that land in that area is zoned M1, which would allow for 75% impervious cover. And the proposed zoning has it as significantly less than that, mostly because of its proximity to the Main Street culvert and the ditch from the 91 culvert, because that's going to start to back up oddly. So, that's kind of where we're at at the moment, but what this means and what I want to talk to you guys about is how we go to the next level, which is, hang on, where am I? Nope, proposed. I lost my thing. Okay, so, this is our zoning map that we've been working with in terms of trying to get this finalized and looking to see what the impervious covers within these zones should be, what you want them to be. And we're starting to get quite complicated. So, the, one of the things that, I think if we just start from north and work our way around in a circle to the middle, then that makes some level of sense. And just walk through what each one of the zones means, what they're currently, right now, the blue here, which is the riverfront flood zone. The current zoning is an A zone, which allows for up to a 25% impervious. At this point, we're proposing that that drops down to a 10% impervious. This is the area that is 100% within the flood zone and includes the, the North and South Water Street. Is there any reason why I should make a change for that, that anyone can think of?
No, I think that's, I, I think that's what we should do there, because that's always going to flood no matter what.
Anybody else?
Terry, if you had to offer an example of something that would have a 10% impervious coverage, which would, which would be allowed in this area, what, what, what potential could go in there? Just a hypothetical.
Well, for example, a boat ramp, okay? If you had a, an acre, you could have a 4,000 square feet of impervious surface. So, that could be some sort of a pathway, the sidewalk, or recreation area, boat ramp. You know, some, something like that, I think, is what we've been talking about. We have been talking about eliminating the structures and the need for the potentially purchasing the, the existing buildings that are within this zone. So, especially along the waterfront area.
So, passive recreation with a paved parking lot might be a problem?
Yes, with a paved parking lot. I mean, what you probably end up doing is, is doing it as a pervious parking lot. So, it could be paved, but it might be pervious asphalt, or it might be pervious concrete. Probably not pavers, because the river will take the pavers away. But you could do a porous, a porous asphalt for your pathways. You, the, the road in general and any kind of bike route that would be within the road, right, road right of way is not applicable. It, it doesn't, zoning doesn't apply. So, it's really only the development on individual parcels.
All right, going back to your specific question, I, I don't have any concerns with your proposal.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. So, then we have the Warehouse Point residential areas, which is the yellow here, and also the yellow Dean School and Spring. The current zoning is, allows for 25% impervious. One of the things that we all talked about was allowing for up to a 10% building increase. That could either be with a special permit or, or by right. But any additional pavement above that would then potentially need to be pervious in some form, or in other words. So, in other words, you can add in handicap ramp, you could do a porch, you might be able to do an additional room. You might be able to do a garage of some kind, but to allow some potential growth, but we're trying to sort of limit how that would then relate to driveways or additional parking spaces. We don't want to, you don't want to create a scenario where you're allowing a, a develop, the enlargement of a house, but then that also then results in having three more cars. So, it's a, it's a balancing act. Does that make sense to people?
This is Joe. I'm good with that.
Yeah. I, keep going, Terry.
Okay. Anybody else have any other thoughts on that particular area? Okay. All right. So, then the, so that affects those areas. It's, the intent is to allow for some additional growth, but it's really a building growth rather than impervious surface growth. So, that's, that's what the yellow zone is. The highway zone, the, the current proposal is for 70% impervious potential. No, it would be no disturbance of wetlands. And in these areas, we probably require that they have detention. Just, the, it doesn't have a good place to go anywhere, and we may be looking to have them maintain everything on site. So, that's kind of where we're heading on the highway, the highway zone. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, then the, the really important part, in my opinion anyway, is the Bridge Street Mixed Use Zone. And this is the one where, you know, we're, we've been looking at, it includes the farmhouses, for example, up on the upper, the eastern part of, of Bridge Street and the land right behind that, that we wanted to see sort of more heavily developed. It includes the Geysers Plaza and all of the properties along Bridge Street. Currently, it is Zone B1, which allows for a 60%, 65% impervious and up to a 20% of the building FAR. The idea here is that we'd actually go to 70% impervious in this area with up to potentially 75% with a special permit, especially if the existing farmhouse or the historic structures are maintained. I mean, the, the whole idea here is you want to maintain as much as of your historic structures in this area and the historic building massing that you possibly can. This is where you want to have outdoor dining allowed by right in this particular area. But it's, it's definitely, the idea is that you want the most dense development in Warehouse Point in this zone. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay, but the grade is such and the impervious coverage is increasing. Now, you, you can't do anything about the Connecticut River if it's a long-term event. But if it's a short-term event, you know, like a thunderstorm that quickly drops two or three inches, we need to get rid of that water and dump it into the Connecticut River faster than what it is.
Well, right now, the idea is that there's no, no detention required here. In, in this area, the only place that there's detention basically is, is along 91. So, there's no detention required in this area. If you've got 70%, then it's just, it's going to discharge into the pipes and then go out the Blue Ditch. The only other choice. I'm sorry?
But, and, and for what we have now, to get it to the Blue Ditch. But at, at, for what we have now, to get it to the Blue Ditch, it takes forever to get there.
Um, that really hasn't been my observation. The, when it rains, the storm peaks pretty much within a couple of hours after the, the, the rain starts to taper off. It's pretty consistent. But let me go back to your other thought, which was, how do we get the water to the Connecticut River faster? And the only things that I can think of at the moment is if we took the drainage system, especially in the Main Street area, and then routed this instead of doing what it's doing, which is the catch basins are coming this way and then to the Blue Ditch, is that these catch basins and these here would then go into a new system on Bridge Street that would take it directly to the pipes that discharge directly to the Connecticut River. That is physically possible, but would require that the DOT look at the drainage that's occurring in these areas and get it directly to the Connecticut River. And it's certainly something that we can recommend, but it's not something that's going to happen quickly enough so that any properties being developed along this zone wouldn't be able to wait for it.
Terry, would that happen organically anyway? If we're talking about physical infrastructure improvements to Bridge Street regarding widening of the road or the construction of sidewalks or wider sidewalks, someone would have to do a drainage analysis anyway?
You know, typically, they don't.
They don't.
No, the, it's funny, when, when you say would this happen organically, unlike, you know, site development, where somebody would find a way to get a pipe someplace with an easement or something like that. What we're talking about is a wholesale change from the collection of the catch basins in this area, which then dump into the Blue Ditch here and having it go this way. So there's a, there's a hump here along, at the Main Street. And, and that would, that would require DOT to make a determination and to work with the town to make a determination that the next time they do any road improvements out here, that you, the drainage to go that way instead of what it's doing.
But would this be the place to make that recommendation? If it's physically possible, forget about the part and to finance it. Are there advantages of memorializing that concept in this document?
Absolutely. If, if, if this is something that you want to do, and, and I actually am warming to that idea more as we're starting to work at this, that the drainage being routed down Bridge Street, down School Street and down Spring Street has, you know, so that it, it connects into those existing pipes that now discharge directly to the, the Connecticut River, take out whole portions of the drainage area that's now going to the Blue Ditch out of play and sends it directly to the Connecticut River.
What would be some of the disadvantages of doing that? I know all your calculations, you did not make any of those assumptions.
Correct.
Make an argument that that's not a prudent thing to do. Forget about who pays for it.
Well, change is hard, you know, so that's, that's always difficult for people. You know, there, there's, you're talking about putting more water into a pipe system that's designed to do something right now, you know, with a smaller watershed, so it would require an overhaul on pipe sizes. It, it's just complicated and getting somebody to step up to do it is really the downside.
Okay, well, I mean, there, there are grants available to do things like that.
Well, and at some point, you know, they really are going to have to do something with Bridge Street and the intersection with Water Street, whatever it's going to go, whatever's happening there. So there are opportunities for these things to happen.
If you had made those assumptions in this report, I'm not suggesting you do that, but make a would the impervious coverage recommendations for any of these drainage areas be any different? Where you still maintain?
You have the potential to go higher.
Okay. Okay. At this point, I don't think we, it's prudent to change course. I think we should just stick with the recommendations, assumptions that we've made. But I, I certainly would support providing a recommendation where a point where we could explore, someone should explore the feasibility of having the drainage system go farther, go to the east, choose to go to the west rather than go to the east.
I, I think that's, you know, I, I think what we'll have is, we'll have the recommendations for, you know, today, which is the, the proposed zoning regulations. And then we're going to have some long-term recommendations for additional work that sort of needs to be done in the next phase to figure out, you know, get it so that it, this really the drainage area has to change for the, for how this is set up.
Okay.
So anybody have anything else on the Bridge Street Mixed Use Zone?
I do not.
I'm good.
So then the next one is this Warehouse Point Commercial Zone, which is on both sides of Bridge Street. This is the state property on this side, and this is the backside of the, the properties that had a former application on them. And in this particular area, this is currently zone B2. And I, I'll bring to everybody's attention that this, this area here, right behind those farmhouses, we're proposing to be 70% impervious. But the, the flip side to that coin is that this area here has to go to 40% impervious. So that the development towards the back of the property, of which there's a big wetlands back here, by the way, would then be less impervious. So we gained on the front side, but we're taking away the impervious surface on, on the backside so that it would be 40% impervious. And this area in particular has to meet the water quality improvements. And we're recommending a 10% of that chain, you know, any new impervious surface, 10% of that should be infiltrated so that it significantly reduces the amount of water that's coming through this pond between Spring and Holcomb and then ultimately Main Street, this area here. So that, that seems to be the flip side of increasing the impervious surface up at the top of the hill here. Does that make sense to people?
What happens to those pervious surfaces in the springtime? When, you know, freeze thaw, freeze thaw, freeze thaw?
You know, when the pervious movement started, there was an initial discussion that they, they, they're not suitable for cold weather, cold weather climates. Okay, so the pervious asphalt, the pervious concrete, all of those things, they, they really got a bad name for the the cold weather climates. University of New Hampshire has been actively involved in basically proving that as a wives' tale, old wives' tale, and showing science associated with how to do pervious surface correctly in a cold weather climate. And so there are very specific profiles for what the asphalt or the concrete is made out of, what the reservoir, the stone reservoir underneath is. And my experience, I have worked with both pervious concrete and pervious asphalt. I like them both. Their pervious asphalt is approximately 30% more than regular asphalt. Not because of the asphalt, but because of the layers that you have to lay it down with and the stone reservoir underneath. And the stone reservoir is dictated by how good or bad your soils are. So when you have lousy soils, you need to have much greater stone reservoirs. And if you have really good soils, then you can argue that you can do less of that. But it's a little bit more expensive. We've not had any difficulties with it. With, the only thing that I would say is, one of my pervious, the pervious asphalt applications that I've dealt with was in a shopping center. And the only problem that we have had after 15 years is that the, when we have really, really hot summers, the, it has nothing to do with cold weather at all. The cold weather is magnificent. When it, when we get those sleet and freezing rain times, the area that's pervious asphalt, what, once it stops, it dries and is clear and safe within a relatively short period of time. Whereas the regular asphalt is slick and nasty and, you know, they got to watch for slip and falls. But in the summertime, the only thing that I can see that is a downside is that where people turn into their parking space, you know, and the wheels rest at the front, you know, where you, where you twist, there's a little bit of compression that has occurred, not in terms of a, like a dip, but it has caused the, the tar within the porous asphalt to congeal in those areas. So they, it doesn't have the same capillary action from the surface as the, the pavement right next to it. It's, it's been smooshed. It's not, it doesn't generate a problem, but it's just an observation on my, my end.
Good to know, thank you.
Yeah. And porous concrete, I love porous concrete. It's a fabulous product, but it's way too expensive for most people to think, to consider. It's a, it's, we have a, we have one of those in Enfield off of a medical office building. So it, it was a road that went through the, a wetland area and the porous asphalt meant that we didn't lose any water regime in any fashion. And it's, it's been perfect. It's, it's virtually, looks brand new. No. Any other questions with respect to the Warehouse Point Commercial Zone?
I have none.
I may end up calling that something different because all of our schemes at the moment look like this is becoming residential back here. So I might have to change the name of that. It occurred to me, okay, all right. Continuing on, everybody's good with that?
I am, yes.
So then we have the area here, the Commercial Recreation Zone. And the existing, like I've mentioned, the existing M1 zone is a 75% impervious cover. It doesn't take into consideration the wetlands or anything. And right now, what we're talking about is for this to go to 40% impervious cover. And that has to do with the proximity to this segment of the Blue Ditch. And we might be able to argue that you could go to a higher impervious cover, but they would have to essentially infiltrate and detain onsite so that it was, or retain onsite so that there'd be no discharge of the increased amount of volume. And I can't imagine that anybody would want to do that, but that is a possibility as well, if you think that that's a good idea. Okay.
Yep.
So then the, the next segment is Main Street. The important parts of Main Street have to do with the historic structures, the building massing, sort of limited transition. I think people would like to see this stay as residential zone. What's residential, commercial is commercial, not too much bleeding out, but that may change over time, so allowing for flexibility of that if the historic structures remain. Right now, this area has multiple zones. It's zoned R1, R2, M1 and B1, which has everything from 25% to 75% impervious cover. What we're talking about at the moment is for this to go to a 40% impervious surface maximum. If it's, if there's over 40% or maybe it goes to 50%, that they would have to provide infiltration or pervious, use some sort of pervious component if it, if it goes above 40%. Not sure what that final number would be, if it's another 10%. I, I'm looking for a little bit of feedback from your end in terms of what that might be.
Terry, you think that number is too low?
I'm thinking the number isn't flexible enough.
Oh.
So like over here on the properties at the corner of Holcomb, there's some commercial that are probably already at 60%. And, and those, those, it's just not particularly flexible. The library, the church, you know, you always want to make sure that the, the, those areas are probably already at 45% to 50% impervious cover. So it's just, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem flexible enough. And I certainly wouldn't want to hamstring the library or any of the, you know, you know, those institutional uses by the impervious cover. That would be bad.
So what creative way could you, could you increase the potential of higher impervious coverage with incentives?
Well, they, you could go to like, for example, up to 60% where you provide infiltration or pervious surface for that delta, you know, that additional, and, and make that a special permit so, so that you could, you would have the flexibility of being able to do that. So it's not, it's not that if they want 60% impervious cover, then they must provide infiltration and/or pervious pavement so that you're not you, you're, the calculation would still say 40%.
So by what you just said, that flexibility does not exist for this, for this zone?
Well, it, it doesn't exist within your, your zoning regulations at all. So this would be, you know, this would be a good place to start to introduce that.
Oh, okay, well, I, I think that may be a good place to start.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Any other thoughts on this one?
I think that's a good idea, Joe. I think that's a good idea.
Now, you've got a mixture in there now, and it certainly has the potential to continue that way.
This is the same area where we struggled regarding identifying some addition, possible additional uses. We just didn't know what was really a good fit here.
Right, right. And I, I think probably what will happen in this particular zone is that over time, you know, the, the success of the soccer or, you know, they have other things that they're interested in would, that they're going to come to you and they're going to ask you to add a use in that zone. Because right now, we can't really envision anything, but that doesn't mean that they would be wrong. That would be the protocol is that, you know, if something comes up and, okay, well, it's only, is only this particular area. So, you know, it, it doesn't make sense, make an application to add that use to the regulation.
Jim's been begging for a motocross track somewhere. He's been mentioning that a couple of times, so maybe, maybe this is perfect. Except for the neighbors.
I think it would probably be, you'd actually hear it all the way to Bridge Street.
Okay. As you're enjoying your gourmet meal.
Right.
Terry, we just had an application from the property of the Sports Dome, kind of carving it up into separating the residential off from the rest of the property.
That's pretty much what I'm doing here, too.
Okay, just want to make sure it's, that you are aware of that and
It's consistent.
Because the houses, I think, may no longer be part of that piece of property.
I think that that's a good thing, frankly.
It seemed logical when we heard it.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I believe what they're talking about is the extension of the ownership into these parcels over here. And you can see I pretty much took them and put them into the Main Street Zone. Okay. So that idea of, you know, increased impervious surface tied into a special permit that would then require that they do infiltration or pervious pavement in order to offset the increase comes into play in this middle zone here, the, the Warehouse Point, Main Street Commercial. It's currently M1 or it is M1, this is M1, and then all of this is residential over here. So it's, it's not, doesn't make a lot of sense. You, you know, this is the area that we were planning for potential additional activity, if it was possible, you know, for the, on the town property. So we were looking at saying that it might be seventy percent impervious, where you could go up to seventy-five percent with the special permit and preserving historic structures, providing infiltration, you know, and potentially using pervious pavement. So that seems to make sense. Right now, it's sixty percent impervious, this whole area anyway. So this would allow for a little bit of growth that, that would make sense. So what do you guys think?
Okay. I, I, I don't want to digress. I'm considering how, how late it is time, but I do have a question though. We're trying to make this as, as attractive as possible for potential developers and homeowners to expand where reasonable. This whole idea about allowing additional pervious coverage, impervious coverage with a special permit, is that going to be a distraction? Is that going to be deterrent for some people not to develop here or consider here?
Well, I mean, the, the idea here is that it, it's, it's only, the issue of special permits over the last years in the state of Connecticut have to do with the discretionary special permits. The idea here is that discretionary, it's if I do this, then I get that, is the theory. But special permits do require a special, a, a public hearing. And so there may be some reluctance.
Yeah, because there's more risk involved.
There's more risk, but the idea is that under certain circumstances, it should make a considerable amount of sense. And it's really depends on, on the commission to clearly understand sort of what the overall intent is and knowing that she, you know, people are going to find change difficult no matter what, but something has to happen here. And you want to be able to control it. So that is really the incentive. Now, you could theoretically do it as a, you could add a level of review in your site plan process. So it wasn't a special permit. It just, it requires some additional review, but you don't have that you know, you don't have that process set up already in your zoning regulations. So I think it's actually simpler if it was a special permit with specific criteria to meet, rather than just leave it open-ended.
Okay, fair enough.
So if this makes sense to everyone, I can, I will take this map and make it final and use this for the, the last run of the stormwater calculations. We're pretty much at the end of that part of this and, and a little bit over budget, but that's not your problem. And so I just want to make sure that we get this done. Because ultimately, the, the final products here are, the, the stormwater part of it is feeding into the zoning, and that needs to be solid. But the final product is a zoning map and some, you know, a draft zoning regulation. So I want to be able to get there.
Can I ask a question regarding the stormwater management scenarios that you're running? Obviously, you're running these through a model.
Yep.
Are those very subjective? Like I'm
No.
But like, if you ask a healthcare professional, you could ask, you, you, you have a particular problem. You could ask two different healthcare professionals. You may get two different opinions. Is, is this pretty cut and dry? If, if you ask two, two land use professionals, two civil engineers, they're going to come up with approximately the same results?
Yes. And one of the things that I'm using is a check and balances. It's my intent to touch base with, you know, Tim and Jay at Russo. And just since they, they deal with a lot of the clients here, property owners, just to make sure that it makes sense to them as well as Len, so that when it, you know, it all sort of becomes real, that everyone is sort of on the same page.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, because let me just put it this way. I, you know, four or five years from now, you get a bunch of, you know, engineers saying, oh, this was stupid, or you don't want to be involved in any of that. Doesn't make any sense. I can show you what you should have done. Yeah, we don't want to get involved in that. Okay, that's, that's really all I had for this evening. If this makes sense, then this is what I'm going to work with and, and get this heading towards where it needs to go so that we can put together the final version of the stormwater calculations, but also have that information available. One of the things that I had sent you for this evening, which I haven't pulled up because it's not, is that profile of the blue ditch. The profile of blue ditch shows various different water elevations by the storms. Those calculations are based on the, the model. So I want to make sure that they match so that I can then blend the, the stormwater profile with my aerial photo for the presentation purposes for the public. So that, that's kind of where we're headed with that.
Yeah, I, I say, let's, let's put it out there and let's see what happens.
Thank you, Terry. Very well done, as usual. Very informative.
Sorry to keep you so late. You guys are busy.
But Thank you, Terry. Good job.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. I'll see you guys in two weeks.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Uh, just a couple more things. Just for the record, there's some correspondence from EverSource, 112 Prospect Hill Road, communication regarding intent to file petition to the Connecticut Siting Council to modify an existing wireless communication facility at the East Windsor area work center building. And I, I don't think there's really anything for us to do. It, it just, it just information.
That would be correct, Joe.
Thank you. Under our business meeting, do we want to spend any time going over critical site, site visits? I am sure that's kind of why Joe hung around. We're cutting into his nap time. Is, is, is there any pressing things we, we want to bring to our attention?
Oh, I, I think there are. In fact, Joe has, well, he's on now, but there's a couple of specific things he wants the commission's perspective on.
It'll only take about maybe hour, hour and a half, and I should be done. So buckle up and let's get going.
I don't know if I have an hour and a half left in me, but go anyway.
If it's any consolation, I was at the police department last night around midnight, got home, and I'm anxious to get to bed too, so I'll make it quick. Oh, let me see. I guess, let's start with Harrington Road. I received a letter from the resident, and he's insisting he's doing nothing there illegal. So looking for your all advices, what the next step you want to go?
Cease and desist, give it to a lawyer.
Have you heard from the Department of Motor Vehicles?
No, I have not. I need to work on a better contact for them. And I actually need to talk to the chief of police because I think he might be able to get me in, in better there.
Okay, if, if you run into dead ends, I know a few people over DMV myself, so you offline can reach out to me and I will help you the best I can.
But that is the direction of the commission, though, is the, pursue the DMV route and to issue a cease and desist.
George, I have a question. Is, is it within your right, if you drive by and observe a vehicle being operated on, to ask to show proof of ownership as to who owns the vehicle? Because he claims that these all belong to him?
Yes, and, and my first apology is I wanted to, and I can email it out to you all tomorrow. The, the copy of the letter he sent me, I, I did not happen to catch the packets in time. But I will send you out an all copy of the letter. And technically, the letter we sent him was a cease and desist notification already. So we've already covered the cease and desist. It's really the next step you want me to go. I mean, turn him into motor vehicle or, I mean, I think that's probably the next logical step. I, I think us going the law way or going, you know, hiring the attorneys and stuff, I, I, I mean, we're going to have to prove he is doing something illegal there now.
Let DMV prove.
Well, let them run with, I think, let them run with the ball and, and then see, see how they feel about it.
Worth a shot.
Frank, you're shaking your head. Why?
Who's shaking their head? Me?
Frank, Frank.
I'm shaking my head because, you know, I, I think, I think you're just afraid to spend the money on a lawyer. You've already determined, you, you sent him a cease and desist. So you've already determined in your mind or in our mind that he's doing something illegal. Okay? So now turn it over to your attorney. Go after him. Otherwise, you're going to be screwing around for another six months. My opinion.
So why do we have to turn it over to the town attorney? Don't we have the ability to assess fines right now without the town attorney?
We, we do, but we haven't, we have no proof. I mean, honestly, driving by there, I, I can't tell whose exact vehicle he's working on in the garage. I mean, and I don't know if I reserve the right to just walk into his garage and say, who, who owns that? Who owns this? It's, his driveway isn't the extreme that it used to be. But apparently, there's still work happening in the garage. Now, the ownership of the vehicles, I don't know. I don't know if he's, I mean, according to his letter, he is doing it for friends and family and he works on police department, ambulance, and are police workers, ambulances, and fire department people, and he's just helping them out. He's basically a good Samaritan who will fix your car for free.
That's a lie. So, Joe, this is Jason, I'm sorry, Chairman de la, this is Jason. We would use the town attorney to make sure that we effectuated the process appropriately.
Correct.
That's, that's what we would do. I mean, we have the ability to issue the, the fines, but we just would, would use probably Diane Whitney to make sure that we were doing it in accordance with regulations and statute.
Correct. It seems to me if you've, if you can order him to cease and desist, you've already determined he's done something illegal. Otherwise, you wouldn't give him, you wouldn't tell him to stop. So you've already made that determination. Now it's up to the town and their attorney to go after it. I mean, to me, it's a simple case. I have a son that's a stepson that's an attorney. Well, anyways.
Joe, he, he's still running cars to the back. He's just bringing them in one, one or two at a time. That's what he's doing.
So this guy doesn't do anything during the day other than hang out in his garage and, and work under the hood or under the, under carriage of cars? This is what he does all day for free?
This is what he's told us. And, and, yeah.
He's got a lift. I went by the other day. He's underneath the lift. He's got one on, on the lift. He's got one down on the, on the floor with a hood open. You know, if you got a problem, just have the police officer go in, say, he want, look at the vehicle, check the registration. He can do that. Just call it in. He's got that authority. Who's the car belong to? And talk to that person. Then in fact, is he doing it for free or are you paying him? I mean, just keep going after him. Don't, don't give up. That's, and he's, he's just fingers here just are whips.
No, I, I have no intention of giving up. Trust me, man. I, I will, I will, I will go to the next step and be able to report back to you in a couple of weeks. And just briefly to touch, I did get a couple of new applicants for basically, you know, blight and unregistered vehicles on Bridge Street. And I'm actively working on Pleasant Street with the gentleman. And the only other thing, I guess, 131 Nor- North Road. I've heard nothing back from them. We sent them a cease and desist. They've got, you know, abandoned vehicles and nothing has changed out there. Zero. So I, I guess I'm looking for a little recommendation from the board. I could also basically compose a letter and come up with the fines and hit them with that if you'd like.
Well, let me ask you this. I mean, what, what's different about that property versus the Harrington Road? I mean, why cherry pick? I mean, if, if you, we think that we have a solid case, why would we seek the attorney's advice for Harrington Road versus seeking the attorney's advice for North Road?
Well, North Road, we sent, we sent them a notice of violation.
Okay, we did not send them a
We did not send a cease and
Oh, okay. My, my, my apologies.
And, and maybe I misspoke, you know.
No, no, I think I screwed that up.
Yeah, so Pleasant Street, North Road, the two houses on Pleasant Street, North Road, both got, both we sent a notice of violation. The only cease and desist was Harrington. So I'll go the next step with North Road and Pleasant Street. Now, I've been working with a, a Cody Keeler. We're still trying to get some clarification on the animals. They've leased some property behind their house. It's in Enfield. They're, they're, we're just trying to get the housing of the animals worked out. And I'm just working with, working on trying to get the right clarification to tell him he cannot keep the animals there. So I'll report back to you, you know, in a couple of weeks on that one. And I will, I'll send notices of violations out to the, the two that I just received.
Good job, Joe.
I, I don't want to keep you guys any longer. I mean, it is nine thirty.
Yeah.
And
Joe, you're doing a hell of a job, really. I really appreciate all your work. I do.
Well, thank you, Frank. I appreciate that coming from you.
How, how, how does the saying go, a good defense is, is a great offense?
So on that point, I just wanted to share with the commission that we have started advertising for the zoning, zoning enforcement position. And that went up yesterday. So if anybody is, is, knows of any good applicants, we are actively recruiting.
Okay, good. Nobody said my name. Thank you.
I was gonna.
You'll pay, Jimmy.
Quick question for Jason before we go. I know I don't want to take up any more time. Jason, I'd like to thank you. I hope my thanks are incorrect about you obtaining a new policy for our insurance and saving a town a half a million dollars or approximately so.
About half a million, yeah. That's just on the town side. The school came along too, and they're going to save another seven hundred or so each in perpetuity. So that's a, somewhere between of, of, well, we'll call it a half a million and a one point two million dollar savings in back office costs that, you know, I mean, nobody really cares about how much you spend on insurance. They care about how much you're able to spend educating your kids. So, you know, that we're able to cut expenses on the office function is, is a good thing. And it's, quite honestly, it's also cheaper for the employee and it's better insurance. This was
Yes, that's, that's what I was told. It's just unbelievable. Is it, is it the state insurance, the state of Connecticut?
Yeah, it's, it's the partnership prevention two point O. It basically allows municipalities to pull into the state insurance plan. When we were talking with the folks from the Comptroller's Office, I said, in November, I was a state employee. Is this the same insurance that I had then? Said, yes. I said, is this the same insurance or is it like the same insurance? And he said, no, it's the same insurance. So I said, is it other municipalities who are pulling in or are we in with state employees? And he said, no, you're in with state employees. So this is a home run. But thanks for
Where have we been for the last 20 years on this insurance deal? I mean, you did a hell of a job. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have nothing.
I'm fine.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? I thank you all for your tremendous participation tonight and have a good night. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.